What, mics on? Mics are on. Okay, we're going to come to order for our regular city council meeting tonight, November 8th, 7 o'clock. Do we have a report city attorney on closed session?
Um, yes, Mayor. Prior to going into closed session, since there was, the clerk wasn't here at the time, I want to record that the council met an open session and voted unanimously to add an item to closed session. It was a claim of Richard Stamey. It was, that was one that was filed on October 18th, 2002. And so that item was considered in closed session, and the other item on a decision of whether to initiate litigation was considered in closed session. And there's nothing to report on either one of those items at this time.
Great, thank you. City clerk?
The record will show that all members are present. And I also wanted to point out for members of the audience, since we have a polling place in the lobby, if you're looking for agendas and staff reports, they're on the conference table up here by the cameraman.
Okay, we'll stand for the pledge of allegiance, and tonight's invocations is from Reverend Dr. Lydia Saradan from St. Andrews. Councilman Ridgeway, please lead us.
Thank you. Please follow me in the pledge of the flag of this great nation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I just want to say thank you, council members, for all your good work. Because we come from very different faiths and religious backgrounds, may I just ask that we stop for a moment of silence, those here and those watching on television, and just ask for God's direction, for wisdom, for guidance, protection, as you do your work this evening as a council group, and as we continue to be good citizens in this incredible city in which we live, and of course, nation. And so join me for just a moment of prayer. We thank you, God, for your goodness in all things. Amen.
Thank you. Okay, city clerk, what do we have here? Presentations first?
Yes, we do. We have a presentation, the Orange County Human Relations Commission.
Honorable Mayor, members of the city council, I'm Pat Crone. I'm a Newport Beach resident and commissioner on the Orange County Human Relations Commission. I'm here tonight to briefly share with you some of the things that the Human Relations Commission has done in Newport Beach in the last year, and present you with a copy of our annual report, which I believe you already have. Many of our services are countywide and aren't broken down by city, so it's impossible for me to really allocate what's been done in Newport Beach, but I can tell you that we do training, police training in the Sheriff's Academy. We have the Human Relations Awards. We have many educational programs available to the public. And we have the Hate Crime Network, which is kept and watched by the commission. I'd like to share the following data with us, with you, that, that we've actually done, the things that we've done in Newport Beach in the last fiscal year, in collaboration with the Newport Beach Police on hate crimes and individuals and community groups on hate incidents, we documented eight hate crimes or incidents in the city of Newport Beach in 2004. We mediated 59 cases in the community or courts where one or more of the parties was a resident of Newport Beach. This was in fiscal year 0405. We built community with Newport Beach residents and staff through the Hate Crime Network and the Victims Assistance Partnerships. We served Newport Beach young people with the School Interethnic Relations and Violence Prevention Programs at Cronin Del Mar High School and Newport Harbor High School. And we gave youth leadership development programs in both high schools. The students and teachers from Newport Harbor High School and Cronin Del Mar High School attended our Walk in My Shoes Symposium to learn to create safe and inclusive school communities. In conclusion, I'd just like to underscore the importance of investing in human relations infrastructure. Just like the storm drains have to be built before the storm so they can protect us, human relations infrastructure, which is comprised of our model programs and institutions and relationships, must be invested in over time. And this is particularly important in Orange County now because of our dramatically changing demographics. And we want our cities to be safe and inclusive places for all people. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pat Crone. Thank you for that report. City clerk, what's next?
Presentation of check from Friends of the Library.
That's good news. Oh, big ones.
I'm here representing the Friends of the Library, and I'd like to present-
Can you, for our record, can you identify?
My name is Martin Flank. I'm the president of the Friends of the Library.
Thank you.
And I just want to mention something about the Friends of the Library. We're a group which has been going for approximately 45 years, and we grow every, a little bit every, every year. And last year, we were able to donate to the Mariners Building Fund 225,000, 200,000 Newport Beach Public Library. We're made up of roughly 800 members, 100 volunteers, who man the bookstores, man the sales, and provide all the energy and effort in producing this amount of money. And this money goes for the children, children's funds and so on and so forth. We also give to the troops. We package boxes for, for the, for the troops overseas in Iraq. And all in all, this year, we're presenting this check for $171,950. And we hope to be giving more as the year goes on.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. I might want to answer, add one other thing, if I may, that we worked with Linda Castelaus, who is our library director, and we have a very good relationship, and we seem to be working quite well with her.
Oh, this is great. This is really grassroots, Jeff.
Thank you.
And that's, that little donation, the little by loan, too.
Yeah, fifty cents books, dollar books.
Great, great service. Thanks again.
Well, I just wanted to say a word. I'm Harry, Harry Hamilton, president of the trustees of the library, and we want to thank the Friends enormously for their continued support. As you probably read in the paper, Newport Beach Public Library was ranked as the top library in the state of California for cities of our size. And so we want to thank the council people for their basic support of the library. But it is through the extra funds that are generated by the Friends of the Library and by the Library Foundation that gives us a little bit of an edge to become just the outstanding library that we have, the jewel of the city. So we thank you. We thank the Friends. And to the audience, and to the TV audience, keep buying these books and then turning them into the Friends Service so that we can get these books. So it's a wonderful service of turning them over in little bits and pieces, is quite right, at a dollar apiece on average. $171,000 is a lot of books that move through the Friends' little corner of the library. So thank you, and to more great success for the Newport Beach Library. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. And you have to also note, that's a lot of bulky items, a lot of little, a lot of handling of books, weight, little receipts, little making change. It's a lot of hands-on work, and that's, and that's important. That's why it takes so many to do it. I want to also, this is reported by staff, because we've got initiative dealing with certificate participation. The Central Library opened in 1994, and most of us remember, 1994, that wasn't the rosiest economic times. $10 million cost. $2 million came from private donations. $8 million came from certificates of participation, the same vehicle that's being proposed for City Hall. At the current time, that balance is down to 5.8 million. So just tell you that certificate of participations have been used in the city and for good results. Doesn't, we haven't made a decision on City Hall, but we've used these before, and we're paying down on them, too. Okay, thank you. City clerk?
The last presentation is the recognition of Max Mooseman, Castaway Park Kiosk, and Justin Towers, the Irvine Terrace Park railing. These are two Eagle Scout projects.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Mark Harmon, Director of General Services. It is my pleasure this evening to introduce two young men who have made significant contributions to the community's park through their Eagle Scout projects. Several times a year, scouts will contact general services staff with the hopes of completing an Eagle Scout project within the community, and that's usually at a park site. Staff works with these young scouts to identify a project and helps them to prepare a presentation to the Parks, Beaches and Recreation Commission for approval. These presentation, presentations, excuse me, are very detailed. What you're going to see, we've got a few slides for each scout to show off their project a little bit. But over and above the hammer and nails, the scout has to make a very detailed presentation to the commission, including budget, a work plan, which includes staffing and materials cost. They have to prepare the PowerPoint presentation to the commission. It's pretty intimidating if you haven't been through the, the process. And these two scouts, I was fortunate enough to be on the commission, or at the commission meeting for one of these presentations, and these young men do an incredible job. So I'm first going to ask Mr. Max Mooseman to come up. The first thing that Max will do is introduce his family, who has supported him through this process, no doubt. And then Max will describe some of the aspects of his project. Max was in charge of the Castaways Park Kiosk. And if you've had the opportunity, which I'm sure you have had, to go up there, it's just a beautiful entrance to the park, and Max did an incredible job setting this up and supervising it. So with that, Max, if you'll join me up here?
Well, first of all, I'd like to recognize my parents, Bob and Beverly Mooseman, who have helped me so much in achieving the goal of Eagle Scout. And yeah, I began my project about a year ago, and have been working up to April 8th and 9th, which are the dates shown here. We first began, and we set the kiosk in concrete, as shown, and we then moved along and started landscaping the bank around the kiosk with various native flowers that just looked gorgeous in bloom. Then we put on the roof, which was actually a quite difficult task, because it weighed several hundred pounds. And we constructed this in the garage, laminating plywood together and such. This is the finished product. We logged, I think, a vague, right around 300 scout and volunteer hours to complete the project. It includes a retaining wall, a DG pathway around the kiosk, and of course, the kiosk itself. I also created information to put into the, both sides of the kiosk, as well as building the actual structure. That's it. And I'd like to thank you all for making it possible for the recognition of my project. I'd also like to thank Councilman Rosansky, who helped on my project quite a bit. And thank you very much, council.
Mr. Mooseman. Actually, I have a question. Maybe, Mark, you know the answer. Did he have to get a permit, submit plans, and get inspections?
If a building permit is required, the scout is asked to go through that process as well. They, they pretty much do this from start to finish, obviously with staff's assistance. But they make the presentations, they get the permits, they supervise the work. They get to supervise the council member that is there with them, which is a pretty neat thing to do. So it's great. They, they get a great experience. We get some free stuff, and so it's, it's a good program all the way around. And you can see the finished product. I mean, it's just, it's incredible. It's good, it's good stuff.
Thank you.
The next scout that I would like to introduce is Mr. Justin Towers. This was a very unique project. Justin, when he came to community services staff, we suggested a split rail fence surrounding the Irvine Terrace Park. Now, the reason, this is a little bit more than just a fence. It, it does add a lot of beauty to the park. But unfortunately, this site, in the past, has been victimized by some vandals who decided it would be fun to put their car up on the grass, do circles, or whatever those people do. And they just, they just tore it up. They made a mess of the park, thousands of dollars of damage. Luckily, it was at, we believe, at nighttime, no one was at the park or on the park taking a walk. It could have been a much, much worse situation. So we worked with Justin to come up with a design to put a fence that doesn't take away from the beauty of the park, doesn't hide the park in any way yet, obviously detracts cars from being where they're not supposed to be. So with that said, I'm going to let Justin walk through the project a little bit. And again, I'll ask him to introduce his support crew that's here with him. Mr. Justin?
Hi, my name's Justin Towers, and I'd like to recognize my parents, Sue Towers and Bernard Towers. I'd also like to thank everyone who worked on my project. And I'd like to thank the Homeowners Association of Irvine Terrace, who donated a lot of money. And I'd like to thank Mr. Rosansky for coming and digging holes.
A lot of holes.
The fence is 500 feet long on the perimeter of the, the park that's around the street. And it took us three days to work on it, and we hit a lot of rocks, a lot of rocks. And there was a lot of sore grownups the next day. It's treated lumber, and I'd like to also thank Mr. Kearns, who worked with me throughout the project, and Mr. Kevin Pecar, who was Mr. Kearns's correspondent. And that's it. All right.
Thank you. As the Eagle Scout Coordinator for the Rancho Del Mar District, which is close to Mesa and Newport Beach, these are two exceptional examples of projects that the Eagle Scouts do for the city and organizations throughout the, the city churches, schools, and the ENC, Environmental Nature Center, the Upper Bay. There are just any number of, of, of hours. I would, I don't remember the exact man-hours for these two gentlemen, but I would imagine it was probably 300 or 400 per, per project. My wife and I actually went by the, the kiosk, and she stopped and come, you mean Boy Scouts did that? If, on the way into the, to the Castaways, you, park, you need to, to really stop and enjoy that kiosk, because it's a wonderful design. I, I was out walking earlier this week and walked by the Irvine Terrace Park also, and noticed the, the fencing that was in there, which I hope will cut down on the vehicles through there. But at any rate, you two gentlemen are to be congratulated on the wonderful job in organizing and putting together this project and getting it carried out. And congratulations on becoming Eagle Scouts. Ms. Hanske?
I'd also like to add a couple of words here. As a, not only as a councilman, but as an assistant scoutmaster in Troop 90, these are some of our finest boys. We've had over 60 Eagle Scouts now in Troop 90, and I think there's probably another five or 10 working towards that goal. You can see the projects tonight up on the, on the overhead here. They involve hundreds, literally hundreds of man-hours, thousands of dollars, all have to be raised by the scouts. It's not, the parents are writing a check for this. The scout actually has to go out and raise the money. And it really is an accomplishment. It takes months and months of planning. They visit Mr. Webb here as the Eagle Coordinator, but they have to go through a vetting process at the troop. In this case, they do go through a vetting process at the Parks Commission. I think even in your case, in Irvine Terrace Park, you have to go to the homeowners association, homeowners association. So any developer knows, that's a daunting task to navigate through all those groups and come out with a, a project that is credible. So my hat is off to them. I'm very proud of these boys, and I look forward to future Troop 90 projects throughout our town. Thank you.
Okay, all right. Max Mooseman and Justin Towers, you've got it. Three, three claps for you tonight. That's a great job. That's a lot of hard work. I know you, Max, because you went to school with my son for a couple of years, one of my sons. So congratulations to you. This isn't put up on, you know, this is a lot of work, hands-on, in a specified procedure. It's not just something you come up with. This is a very regulated process. Congratulations to both of you. And you're now Eagle Scouts, and there's not that many Eagle Scouts around. We have, we have, we have one up here, you know, but my point is there aren't many, and that's an accomplishment, that you can put on a transcript, and people will know what it means. Congratulations to both of you.
Notice to the public, the city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the council. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones and pagers off or set them in the silent mode. This is a time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on a future agenda for discussion, action, or report.
Okay, let's start with you, Mr. Selich.
I have nothing.
Mr. Rosansky?
Yes, I have a couple of things. Number one, we've been talking about traffic calming in a couple of areas in town for the two years that I've been on city council, but we have yet to see anything here at the council level. I know that there was a comprehensive report that was prepared for the Newport Heights, Cliff Haven area, and it's, the city's been sitting on it about a year. I believe there was another report done in Mayor Heffernan's district, and I've yet to see any result of that. So I'm requesting that the staff bring back to us in the near future what we intend to do with regard to the recommendations in these two reports. Second, with regard to the area of town in West Newport called Newport Shores, I'd like to have a staff presentation and possible change in the Newport Shore specific plan that would eliminate the overhanging of buildings and the setback of the alleyways. The alleyways are fairly narrow through there, 20 feet from building to building. And currently, they're allowed, new homeowner, reconstruction is allowed to overhang the alleyway. I think it has impacts for our trash collection, fire safety with the fire trucks going down the alleyways, and I think we need to revisit that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Webb?
This is a centennial moment. Our centennial, our 100th birthday is on September 1st, 2006, and we have 296 days left to get there. And on November 8th, in 1909, things were moving right along back then, because we passed an ordinance to regulate the sale of gasoline and kerosene. There weren't any gas stations around at the time. Also, at that same meeting, we put, there was an ordinance to authorize a bond election to establish a city water system and a streetlight system. It's interesting, the streetlight system was going to be with illuminating gas rather than electricity. Then again, in 1915, there was a request to annex Balboa Island to the city. In 1948, the Newport Harbor Chamber of Commerce requested money for Christmas decorations at six locations at $100 apiece. And then, the, in 1954, the city council recommended to the State Lands Commission that all of the abandoned PE rideaway be donated or dedicated or given to either the adjoining beach or the adjoining highway. That wasn't done, but at least the city council was on, on top of things and trying to ask for it. On a separate item, last night, the Fire Department put on a town hall meeting, which I attended, along with Councilmember Daigle and Nichols, in which Captain Chip Duncan, Captain Robert Massonis, Captain Bob Pingle, Deputy Chief Ron Sutherland, and Captain Ron Gutierrez related their experiences with, I thought, you know, you mainly heard Katrina, but it was Katrina- it was Katrina, Ophelia, Rita, and Wilma, and there may even be one more that I've overlooked. But these five gentlemen, three of the five actually, if I remember correctly, were sent to the FEMA stations and parceled out. The other two went with church groups to volunteer their services, and some of their experiences were just absolutely phenomenal. And the pictures that they showed were moving. It, the, the work that was done by volunteers in those areas is just phenomenal, and I think that our city can be exceptionally proud of those volunteers that we sent, as well as the hard work that they did. And I am proud to be on the city council and having them a part of our fire department. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Ridgeway?
Thank you. I'd like to tag on to Councilmember Rozansky's comments. A couple of years ago, when Councilmember Adams was here, we requested a report on traffic phasing. That is a coordination of all of our traffic signals. To date, I've never seen anything. I don't know what the status of that is, but it clearly has been a couple of years, and if you could bring that back for a report, that would be appreciated.
Mr. Daigle?
Yes, as Councilman Webb, Mayor Pretend Webb, mentioned, also went to the event last evening with the Fire Department and talking about their experiences with Katrina, and it will be played on our television station. So, we'll all have the opportunity to listen to these very informative and touching stories. There is also examples of great volunteerism with the churches that helped out as well. Tomorrow, I'm looking forward to going with 150 members of our Chamber of Commerce on a visit to China, and it's mostly Newport residents that are on this trip, and I'm really looking forward to spending some time with the members of our Chamber of Commerce. We're going to Shanghai, Beijing, Great Wall, and the Chamber, they run this trip every year, for those of you that might be interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Nichols?
I do have a couple of comments. This is an accolade for the Fire Department, and we had a fire over on Poppy in CDM, and it was up on the hill, I understand. I happen to be out of town, so I don't know the exact, it was on the hillside. It had to be knocked down, or it could have caused major damage in town. It was knocked down, and Fire Departments from other, I understand Costa Mesa also answered some of their help, and I believe the county, and I think it just was done very, very well. We had a, an emergency-type test in a similar fashion that was supposed to have been in Buck Gully, and during that emergency test, we felt we burned down a row of houses, and so keeping this was no small feat. I mean, this, that, those houses are very vulnerable because of the hillside environment, and preventing anything from happening was a, was a real feat, and I congratulate the Fire Department for doing a good job. The second thing is, is I'd like to thank the city for getting some work done on the volleyball courts down on the beach. They're in, there's, there are five of them there. I hope that we can work a little bit with the volleyball players to maybe improve what's there or on possibilities for the future, and I, and I, but I'm very grateful that we got some work done down there, and it does show up. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'm last. I have nothing to report on. City Clerk?
Consent Calendar. All matters listed under Consent Calendar, items 1 through 7, are considered by the council to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council members have received detailed staff reports on each of the items recommending an action. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the council votes on the motion unless members of the council, staff, or the public request specific items to be discussed and/or removed from the consent calendar for separate action. Members of the public who wish to discuss a consent calendar item should come forward to the lectern upon invitation by the mayor, state their name and item number. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium.
Okay. Start at the other end. Mr. Nichols, anything you want to pull?
I do have two items. Item number five, I would like to just get an explanation of which facilities that we're taking over to do maintenance on along the San Joaquin Hills and the other hill, Newport Coast, in the Newport Coast section. And then, number six, I'd like to make a comment and vote on that.
So, you want, you want five and six pulled?
Please.
Good. Done. Okay. Councilman Daigle?
None, thank you.
Mr. Ridgeway?
None, thank you.
Mr. Webb?
I have none.
Mr. Rozansky?
None, thank you.
Mr. Selich?
I have nothing.
I have nothing. So, five and six, do we have a, no, we'll get to the public. We're clear on this on the council. City Manager, you have anything?
Mr. Mayor, there are a number of people in the audience, I think, who would be willing to speak or are here for item number six, so you might not want to wait until after the meeting in order to take that one on.
Okay, let's keep that thought. Let's open up to the public. We'll clear the consentage. Anybody want to pull anything? Any other matter? Okay. Then we'll close the public input on this, and we'll bring it back. City Manager, you, your proposal is that we take this out of order and take number six right now?
I think we could take both of these items very quickly, because there is a map on item number five that shows the areas that we will be assuming.
Okay, well, let's take them, let's take them, because the biggest crowd is here for six, let's, let's take the proposal, let's take six first.
Is it possible to show that on the screen so people might have?
Go ahead, Mr. Ridgeway.
Could you be, I'll make an affirmative motion for the remainder of the consent calendar.
All right, good. Let's take that.
Second.
Okay, let's vote on that first.
Motion carries.
Okay. City Manager, what do you propose? Do you want to take five first?
I think if we could take six first and then come back to five.
Six? Do you need a motion for that, or do we just take it?
If you're good with it, we'll just do it without a motion.
Is that all right? Okay, good. All right, who's going to give their report on this?
Mr. Mayor, okay, Sharon, why don't you?
This is the Memorandum of Understanding with our Firefighters Association. Their last MOU expired in, at the end of December '05. We've been negotiating for quite some time because we had a very complicated issue with a new retiree medical plan, so we have reached tentative agreement with the firefighters for a three-year agreement, and that is pursuant to the direction the city council gave us in closed session, and the summary of the major MOU provisions is provided in the staff report.
Could we review that?
Okay. As I said, it's three years. The salary adjustments are a 2% increase that's retroactive to January of 2005, which is the start date of this agreement, and then there will be another 1% retroactive to July of 2005. In July of 2006, there'll be a 3% increase, and in addition, another 1% that will be for the contribution to the new retiree medical plan, and then in July of 2007, a slightly smaller increase of 2%. We're introducing something new for this association, which is bilingual pay. The city has provided this pay to members of our police department for years, and the firefighters asked for it because it's something that they think helps provide better service. Yes.
Can I interrupt you? And where, after these increases, do, does our Fire Department fit county-wide? Are we in the top half, quartile?
Oh, yeah, I would say within, within the top quarter. We will be within the top five within the county.
All right, good. Excuse me, go ahead.
There'll be a change to flex leave. This is the city's program that combines both sick and vacation leave into one category called flex. And in the, in the 1990s, when we were struggling with our budget because of some state takeaways, one of the things the city negotiated with all of our employee associations was that employees hired from that point forward would receive less flex time accrual than employees who had been here for some time, and over time, this has caused some morale problems as people who are similar in their experience and tenure with the city have different amounts of leave time. So, we would be eliminating what we call the second tier of flex leave. There will be increases every year to the health benefit that we provide, which is a cafeteria program, and this provides for health, dental, vision. It will be $722 per month as of July 2005, $788 in January of 2006, and $854 in January of 2007. And then there is the new retiree medical plan. There's a change to tuition reimbursement. Right now, courses for which the city provides reimbursement must be at an accredited college, junior college or university, and the firefighters have told us that a lot of the training that they need for their professional development is from non-college courses, so we've expanded that and allowed, with no change in the amount per year of $1,000, we've just broadened the kind of courses they can use that for. And then finally, they have requested an enhanced retirement benefit. They've been at the formula that's known as 3% at 55, and at the very end of this agreement, at the end of December 2007, they would get the 3% at 50 formula.
Beginning January 1, 2008.
Yes.
Most of us, I didn't know what this meant. Can you explain what that means to the, to the layman who may be listening?
For every, if, if a firefighter under this new plan retires at the age of 50, for every year of service that he or she has given, they would receive 3% of their salary as their retirement benefit.
Of their final salary?
Yes.
All right, so you can retire at 50 or older, and then you tally up the years of service.
Yes.
Multiply that times 3%.
For each year.
For each year, times the final year salary.
Correct.
In essence, that's what that means, just so everybody knows.
For instance, if you had 30 years of experience, that would be 90% of your salary.
Good. Yes.
Is there not a cap, though, on the maximum?
There is a cap of 90%.
90%.
Perfect example.
Is that the end of the report?
Yes, it is.
Good. Mr. Nichols?
I'm relatively satisfied. My comment just is that the 3% at 50 has been the thing that has put San Diego almost in bankruptcy. It's done that same thing. When we passed this for the police department, I believe we picked up an unfunded liability of $9 million that night. Thereafter, in the next year, I, we had quite a number of people retire, and I believe that was in the order of eight or nine people retire. It's a, it's a very, very high retirement base, and there's another feature that has to do with disability that has been overused a little bit, not necessarily by our firemen, but certainly in the state, and that is that there's a presupposition that any disability that a fireman would raise is true unless proven false by the district. So, a fireman could not only retire, but retire on disability, double-dipping, and end up with a salary like 175% times what he's actually earning at that period in time, and, and it's being done throughout the state. I can't support the 3% at 50. I think we need to, to have some, some money in there. We shouldn't be picking up this size of unfunded liabilities. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'd like to move that we approve the Memorandum of Understanding as presented to us tonight.
Second. All right. Any other council comment on this, Mr. Selich? No? Okay. Mr. Ridgeway?
Yeah. Homer, I would like a correction to the unfunded liability. I know it is not $9 million, I think it was more.
The purse people figure out what the rate is based upon the history of retirements and also take into account with a new retirement system, let's say, in this case, going from 3% at 55 to 3% at 50, that people are going to retire earlier. Once those people retire, the city doesn't pay any more into that account, but it is reflected in the rates of the years to come until that balances out, till we have enough history to where that rate is, is hopefully firmly established, and it doesn't vary very much. I've never heard the figure $9 million for the police when we went to 3% at 50, and I don't think that figure is close to being accurate.
No, I, I want to say, it just affects our rates in the future effectively. Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for the correction. I just don't want there to be a misunderstanding.
Okay, any other council comment? Mr. Nichols? No? Okay. I'm going to open this up to the public. Anyone wants to come down and talk?
Don't force them.
Okay, we're going to close it. I'm going to bring it back. I'd like to give a comment. I'm going to focus right on that 3% at 50 and focus on the staff report that indicates that Newport Beach is the only agency in Orange County that doesn't have this. Our police have had this for a while. Firemen have asked for it, our Fire Department for a while, paid a lot of money into purse this year, $16 million into, and that was, that didn't have to do anything with, about this race nor the police. It had to do with poor rates of return by purse and a lot of other factors. We don't make the market. I'm not pleased about this, but this is where the market is, if that's, market's telling us. What does concern me is that if this is the market, what's next? You know, where do we go with this? Concerns me when our police chief retires, we have no one to replace him. He, we have to hire him back. I just want to make sure there's the incentive, because 50 to 60, for most of us in the private sector, is the time we're somewhat experienced, and that's a good, those are important years. It's important years for the, in the Fire Department as well, because you bring all that experience to the upper levels to run the department. And it's always been a concern of mine when you, when you start talking about 50 as being a time to retire. I'm a lot older than that, and I'm nowhere near retiring, so it's more the concern of the incentive and more concern of where the market is and what would be next that would incentivize people to be firemen. And you do a great job. I'm not disputing that at all. We don't make the market. Newport Beach wants to be at the market, and hopefully we are by this, and we do appreciate what you do, all of you, you know, and it, and I, no one's questioning that at all, and therefore, if the market is there where it is, you should be at market, because we're Newport Beach, and not that we can afford it, but that's what our residents expect. You prefer to work here because you're, you know, loyal employees to us. The 3% doesn't work at all if you don't, if you, if you jump from department to department, so it's where you work here, and I appreciate that. So, with that in mind, I'll close my comments. Anybody else?
Call for the vote.
Let's call for the vote.
With Councilmember Nichols voting no, the motion carries.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you for not talking.
And you don't have to stay for the rest unless you're really, this is not part of your duty, and thank you for coming, and thank you for showing, as a, as a group, your support for this by showing up.
Thank you. Thank you.
It's great. All right. City Manager? Number five?
I think we're looking at item number five. We don't have loaded the two maps that are shown in the staff report. There is one map that basically shows red and green areas. The red areas are the Newport Ridge, and the green areas are the areas in the Newport Coast, and basically, they are strips along roads. And then the second map, which is two pages past the first one, talks about native view parks. So, it is the, assuming the maintenance of all of this acreage, and the contract amount is $34,980 a year. So, council has previewed-
So council has previously approved, assuming the maintenance of this, this is what our pre-annexation agreement said that we would do, and we're finally getting around to doing it, and we know what the costs are going to be. And this would be the concluding action for the city council will take, and then it's our property to assume.
Okay, Mr. Nichols?
Just a question. Is that the total amount, the $30,000, or is that... I wasn't exactly sure on that.
Well, it isn't the total, as far as I know.
I mean, for those parks.
It is just the newly assumed property that are shown in the two maps. We have previously assumed the maintenance of medians and other property.
Yeah, I, my, this is part of our agreement. This puts these parks in our stead, and I was just wondering if we had figures on what that's costing. And then, I understand that, in talking to Mr. Kiff, that Buck Gully is in our purview. It is not in the park system. And so that the funding that we're doing for our water reclamation in that area and anything else that we wish to do could be done as far as, to a large degree, making that a little more usable to people. I mean, from the standpoint of a road at the bottom or paths or something that people could actually use the area. And I think it's good, and I'd like to see people do that. I think it'd be excellent to have happen.
Mr. Harmon?
I'd like to answer Councilmember Nichols' first question. On the cost of the, what I call pocket parks or the wilderness parks, all five are approximately 15 acres. We are paying a reduced rate for maintenance because there simply isn't that much maintenance for those parks. Our normal contract rate is 12 cents per square foot. For those parks, we're paying approximately 5 cents. The annual cost is $34,630 for those parks, for the maintenance on those parks, for all of them.
For all five of them.
That's correct.
And only, if I could make a suggestion, if we could keep some of those trees trimmed a little bit so that people coming down the hill on San Joaquin could look out at the ocean a little easier, coming especially down the hill. It's a beautiful view, and it's being lost at the bottom of the trees to some extent, in the median.
Right. The trees will be a challenge in that area. They planted a whole bunch of trees, and now we get to take care of them. So we'll, obviously, we'll look at those issues as we move along.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome, sir.
Mr. Mayor?
I'm real pleased to have you.
Okay, Mr. Webb?
I move the recommended action.
Second. Any other comment? Okay. Okay, let's call for public comment. I'll close public comment, bring it back. Please vote.
Motion carries.
City clerk?
Public comments. Public comments are invited on non-agenda items generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Come on down. Mr. Billings?
Tom Billings, Newport Beach. Tonight, I'd like to speak on three issues, and two of them I'm really excited about. One is, I've learned this week in meeting with Councilmember Dagel and Assistant City Manager Dave Kiff, and I know this has been going on for a while, but I just learned the reality that we may actually get a city pool in our city. We don't have our own city pool. I'm a master swimmer. I know there's a lot of friends of mine who swim and like to swim laps. Cities up and down the coast, many of them have a city pool. So the opportunity is in council member's district, I understand, the why for a city pool. So I'm encouraged by that. It's great because, and of course, I'd love to be part of that process, and Ms. Dagel explained that I can be. And I'm, right now, forming, gathering the different people that are interested in this to meet with the city and Dave and Ms. Dagel to help with that in any way we can. So I understand that's in the works. There's county money available for that. And anyway, that's exciting. Second is on the volleyball courts. Encouraged to hear also that there's been progress made. I'm not sure what exactly that is, but I know I've been talking with Courtney Watson, who's representing the volleyball players. And again, she's kind of forming an advocacy group for volleyball players to work with the city to help relocate those courts appropriately. And the third thing is something I learned about today that I'm really, just learned about it today. I know this project's been in the works for a while, but it really is disconcerting. And that is, there's, as we all know, there's a, well, a lot of people don't know, so now you'll learn about it. There's a new commercial development going in between Dover and McDonald's on PCH. Well, right at that McDonald's, it's in the works. I know it hasn't been approved, but it's a traffic signal. Well, as we all know, that's one of the most congested stretches of PCH in our city. And rush hour, 8:00 AM, noon, and 5:00, 6:00 PM, it's already bad. So you add a traffic signal in there, which about 150 feet up from that is another traffic signal, Bablo Bay Club. And if you're sitting back at the light at Dover and PCH, you're going to have an additional long wait. Now, I know you can do traffic studies. I know you can try and streamline the lights. But, you know, if somebody's coming out of the Bay Club, that light's going to turn red, and you're going to back up. I'm not a traffic engineer, but I hope that you don't approve that, because that is going to create choke traffic. And a lot of, you know, you guys, if you live on the other side of town, you're going to have to deal with it, too. So I hope that something to be worked out so that that light does not go in. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Ridgeway? Thank you. I know we usually don't respond before there's a condemnation of a project or a light because we... Okay, the light. Well, I'm not in disagreement. I go past there three times a day. So, but I want to let him know that the project is removing 14 drive aprons in that area and reducing it to three. So I think that's important to note. You need to know more information. Secondly, the highway will be widened, one extra lane from Dover up to the project line. So I don't know how that plays into the signal or the phasing. That's, let me say candidly why I asked for a report on traffic phase, or on the synchronization, because we haven't had it. Let me say, in many cities, you can have multiple traffic signals, and with good synchronization, it's not a problem. For whatever reason, I agree, it is a problem on PCH. But now that you have more information, I would say to you, stay close to the process. The EIR is currently being circulated. I think it's at the end of its 30-day period.
Negative declaration.
Pardon me?
Negative declaration.
Negative declaration is within its 30 days. So if you're going to make comments, now is the time. But before you make comments, please review the entire project to determine what the impact will be. And I don't think we know. I guess that's what I'm saying. I'm trying to remain open, and I think that's what we get paid these big bucks for. So anyhow, those are my comments, and I know we usually don't, but on that one, I felt compelled.
Mr. Webb?
The traffic issue has been looked at, is being looked at. By the way, the 150 feet between this project and the Bay Club signal is closer to 1,500 feet. And it's interesting, when the Bay Club signal went in, this was the type of comment that we received. However, that has not experienced or created any additional delay. It actually may have slowed down a little bit of the speeding traffic to where it has actually worked for a benefit. So I think that we need to give this project a chance before we condemn it.
Okay. Okay, public comment is still open on non-agenda. Anything you want to, it's not in the blue sheets. Come on up, please.
Honorable counsel, my name is Sergeant First Class Brad White. I'm a legislative board member with the California National Guard Association, or I should say, the National Guard Association of California. We proudly represent the 20,000 Army and Air National Guard members and their families. I'm here tonight to invite the city of Newport Beach, the citizens of Newport Beach and the business community to participate in our second annual Operation Christmas for the Troops, which is sponsored by the California Legislature, also the National Guard Association of California, and our campaign to have every community support the 300 or nearly 300 active-duty guard and reserve installations and bases in the state of California. It has become even more important or urgent, I should say, this year that we make sure that all military members and families are shown appreciation. In our county alone, we have contributed greatly to the War on Terror and also Operations Iraqi Freedom and Enduring Freedom. In Costa Mesa, many of you probably are aware that we have an Air National Guard Armory. We have Army Reserve out of Irvine at the Irvine Tustin slash Irvine Center, which they will be proudly welcoming home two platoons of the 163rd Organist Company back from Iraq. They are looking for a location to have their welcome home party. They're de-mobbing in Arizona and Texas, so they'll be busted, and they won't have the welcome home signs or anything. And I'm going to rush over, hopefully sometime tomorrow, to see if the city of Irvine would like to meet them. I don't think they've met them in some time since 9/11. But tonight, I'm just here to let you know that the Joint Forces Training Base, Los Al, the National Guard Armory in Fullerton, and also in Orange, has a lot of family members that we can support. Would like to commend the city and its citizens for, I believe you guys adopted a Marine platoon at Camp Pendleton, and it's awesome that you guys have done this and done things in the past. But we definitely desperately do need your help. On the Army side alone, we have suffered about four times more casualties than all the armed services combined. The Army is the largest branch, including guard and reserve, that is in Iraq and Afghanistan, but does not nearly have that support. I work closely with family readiness, not only with the Army, Reserve, the National Guard, but also the Coast Guard, the Navy. We have the Naval Weapons Station in Seal Beach. This is an opportunity to thank them, if we haven't thanked them in a while. We're looking to have new unwrapped toys that you can donate either to one of the 120 state legislative offices. Corporate Ralphs has sponsored this event, so we'll be able to have boxes, and if we find a sponsor to give us those boxes for those locations, that will be able to be throughout Southern California. Also, we will find out this week if Corporate Costco will be also letting us have boxes to donate the toys, which will go towards military families. We're asking for gift cards. There's actually a baby boom going on with some of the returning service members, and so we're asking for gift cards. Local Walmarts are participating. Those are a great location for military wives to basically purchase diapers and other things. So basically, you know, we have that, and we have DVDs and new and used video games. UPS was a sponsor last year. Unfortunately, they will not be able to cover the cost of postage, so we're looking for financial donations to cover that and also to help some of the military families in need. So basically, that's it. If you look on page two, we brought Rosie the Riveter out of retirement, and basically, you're going to be using that as, when we do the official kickoff at the California State Capitol on the 5th, we're going to be having that throughout the Capitol. And also, we're doing a photo op with the head of the California Republican Party and Democratic Party, and it will be with Santa Claus. And the title of that photo op will be "Not All Miracles Happen on 34th Street." It'll be an election night. It'll be a great time for all of us to come together over something we do agree with, and that's supporting our nation's military and families.
Okay, Sergeant, I've got a question.
Yes, sir.
Because, you know, to make this thing simple means you're probably going to get more. What if somebody wants to give you money? Send a check? How do they do that?
Oh, they could send that either to our Sacramento office or our Irvine office. It's located on the website, yellowribbonamerica.com.
Okay.
And we are a nonprofit, so we can issue a tax deductible receipt.
Better say that again.
We are a nonprofit.
No, no, not a nonprofit, but the address, where people can get...
The address...
Yellow ribbon, you said?
Yellow Ribbon America. I have with me the P.O. Box in Huntington Beach, which is 3551...
No, 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 listen. This is a web-based community.
Yes.
So if you give a website, it's more...
Correct.
Somebody can dial that in. That'd be great. Say it again.
www yellowribbonamerica.com.
Good.
Thank you.
And what about toys? Somebody wants to bring some unwrapped toys, doesn't want to drive here, where could they bring it in to the city clerk?
They could bring it to the city clerk. If the city doesn't mind, and we'll send a soldier weekly to pick that up, or they can deliver it to assemble them in Chuck DeVeau's office in Irvine. He's a local rep. He's also on our advisory board. We thought strategically picking legislative offices, it covers the whole state. They could also bring it to the recruiting office at the Joint Forces Training Base in Los Alamos, California.
Listen, they know where City Hall is.
Yes, sir.
If something's going to happen, Clerk's office is easy to get to. I think it's a more logical place, if that's all right with the city manager, that they would collect it here.
If you guys...
You know what I'm saying?
Yes, sir.
That would be better.
That'd be awesome.
Right? Levon? That's good.
Appreciate that. Yeah, definitely. That would be great. Definitely to City Hall, and we'll make sure that gets picked up, and you guys don't get overwhelmed with gifts. And the...
Well, that would be the idea.
Yes, sir.
That they would be overcome.
You're absolutely correct. You're absolutely correct. And really, sincerely, God bless the city for everything you've done. You guys are just awesome, and I hate to even ask anything. You help so many people, but...
Keep asking.
Yes, sir.
This community's got a lot of resources, and a lot of people want to help.
Well, this...
And this is exactly the type of appeal that we need to hear, and we need to hear at this time of year. So that's good, Sergeant. I'm glad you brought it to us.
Yes, and just to share with you, our main concern is for the families. The Army has reported an increase in divorces of 130% this year alone. A lot of that, we feel, is because the families don't feel that they're getting the support. And it's not that the people don't know. It's easy to recognize a uniform, but you don't recognize that your neighbor, you don't recognize, you know, a lot of the family members that are here in Orange County that, you know, they're not going to be asking for things. But this is a great time to say thank you, and I know you guys have done it with the Marine Corps wives, and, you know, basically, we'd love to be able to show it to everybody just for the holiday season.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comment from council on this? Great. Sergeant, thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your time.
Public comment's still open. Anybody else? Come on down, please.
Members of the council, my name's John Moorheart. My address is 2808 Lafayette. I had a request. Is it possible the council would consider enforcing a sound ordinance or a noise ordinance in the bay for the large boats, the loud boats that otherwise are not restricted, although I think it's within the confines of the ordinance requirements that these boats be governed by sound restrictions?
No, there is. Isn't True City turning? Don't we have ordinances that apply to commercial craft?
We do. I think what I might suggest for the speaker to contact my office, and we'll try to get you the information. And we'll try and, what we have to have is reports of when there's noise violations and a process, so we could give you some advice or a process on how to best get that information, so that we can cite the boats for when they do exceed the noise limits that the city has.
All right.
Good.
John, I'll give you that phone number. The problem is enforcement, because it's Harbor Patrol, not our city, but our ordinance does apply to the water. But it's very complex.
Yeah.
So it's really unenforceable? Is that...
Yes.
It's very hard to enforce.
Yeah, the answer is yes.
Is there any way that the council could reconsider trying to step up the ordinance? For example, the large cigarette boats that are constantly cleared out, their exhaust at Lido Peninsula Shipyard or whatever they...
The shipyard is on land, and I absolutely agree. John's building is next door to mine, and the shipyard cranks those boats up every day. And I got to tell you, it's, and I've called, and my guys say they can't get over there. I say, "Listen, you know what? John, you know. They're up there on the rack, they pull them down, and they crank them up."
Is there anything the council could do to try to change that?
Your complaint will start the process.
Thank you.
Good. Thank you, John. Anybody else on non-agenda items? Okay, I'm going to close that portion. City clerk?
Oral reports from city council on committee activities.
Mr. Selich?
We had a GPUC meeting scheduled for yesterday afternoon. However, due to the excess workload on the staff and getting ready for our land use discussions at the next two council meetings, we had to cancel that meeting. I guess we don't have a new time schedule, Julie?
No, we don't. And we're still trying to work out some of the issues that were raised at the last GPUC meeting, and we just didn't want to go until we had it solved.
Okay, thanks.
Are we on schedule?
Yeah, we're right on schedule. You have two meetings coming up after this one to deal with land use policies, so...
Good. That's great. Thank you. Okay, LCP, Mr. Ridgeway?
That's me. We did have a meeting. Everybody showed up a couple of days ago. We rescheduled that committee to meet on November 14th, Sharon. I don't have my calendar.
15th.
15th. And the 15th at what time, Patty?
I actually believe it is the 14th. I think it's Monday.
I thought so, too. Okay, well, Mr. Webb's...
At 3:00.
I'm sorry. 3:00? Thank you. And the intent of that meeting is to take these specific changes that were created at the Coastal Commission hearing, and the committee will go over each one of those in detail and make a recommendation to city council. As everybody probably knows, it was basically a take it or leave it. Council must either adopt or we're back to square one. But I think the committee felt it their obligation to this council to review each and every one of those comments. So we will do that and probably prepare some type of summary report, even though it's a take it or leave it document.
Thank you. I will report on Newport Coast. We had a very engaged meeting last night up there. I'll take it from the top down. The first issue was the Newport Ridge Community Park, which is there at the corner of San Joaquin Hills and Newport Coast Drive, also the portion of the site for the pending Newport Coast Community Center. The report back from the Newport Ridge Association is that we had asked whether they wanted to relinquish the ball fields to the city. There's two ball fields up there. They, in turn, have reversed. They want the property in fee, not even subject to our lease. They want to fence the ball fields in with a lockable gate, along with their other amenities up there, allowing just for the city to have the unfenced parking area and community center site. This will be an area of contention, I suspect, between this council and that association. So we dealt with the community center. They're out, and six weeks or so we'll have bids. And they expect their target groundbreaking is around mid-February next year, so that's fast approaching. The problem there is that they have a cap on cost, and what they have in, according to the annexation agreement, the problem is construction costs have risen dramatically, and there may be some push and pull come when those bids come in, maybe not. City is going to put in the interior fixtures and improvements and operate the facility long-term. So we'll wait and see the bids. There's ongoing effort up there about a library still, private, this time private government partnership-type funding that's starting. The next item was the Marriott timeshare site up there at the new signal. As you go up Newport Coast Drive, there is a mound of dirt surrounded by retaining wall there that everyone supposed was just being stacked there. But apparently, according to the committee, the Marriott has gone in and amended their permit and raised the pad height 45 feet there for their new units. And that will be a, that could be a heated area of contention. This is not, this is city land, but the county has jurisdiction there, and those were issued, the modified permit was issued by the county, not the city, but to those residents of Newport Coast that I heard from last night, it was a hot topic. The last item, as if that wasn't enough, we dealt with the assessment relief. Their contention is that the, from some, that the money by the county from the community facilities up there, which are multiple tens of millions of dollars, has not all been spent at Newport Coast, and they're seeking the county to prove that. Well, nothing's been proven, and times and memories are at issue here, and they have made another request through Mr. Kiff from the city to the county to, and produce the records, which to date have not been forthcoming. So that's a big vitamin pill, but it was even a more involved meeting, and I'm sorry my report went so long.
Mr. Mayor, can I make a comment to that?
I thought you might.
Regarding the two baseball fields, I would like council or as city manager perhaps to seek outside council review of the underlying documents. There is an irrevocable offer to dedicate up there, and I am of the opinion in my review of the documents that they cannot arbitrarily fence in those documents. I'd like an outside opinion. And I have talked to the city attorney on this issue before, and I think there is disagreement, and I think it would be important there. It is very complex, and I certainly understand that. But I think it'd be appropriate at this point in time, in light of the significance of those two, those two baseball fields to the park dedications that are up there.
Well, I agree with you, Mr. Ridgeway, because I think by the time the bids come back, work is undertaken, the ball fields are moved, it's a time to resolve all those issues in that Newport Ridge Park. I think it's a good time to get them all solved, get them all out on the table. And they want to start work, so it'd be a good time to kind of force the issue and put this behind us. Okay. Mr. Nichols? Excuse me. Councilman Diggle?
Yes, I would also support outside council taking a look at this. And my hunch is Chan and Tucker, some of the other firms we utilize, would have that expertise to look at these issues.
Okay. Mr. Nichols? You were there.
It was contentious. The problem the homeowners have is that they don't have use of their ball fields. People are coming in from outside. They're taking over the ball fields. They're not even Newport Beach. They're not residents at all. And they've asked them to leave, and they have left. So there's, that's one aspect. And the other one, I think, is John's favorite, and that is that I believe there's the wrong grass on that field. And ultimately, if that's going to be a super baseball field, it's got to be the right grass. And could you please, Mr. Mayor, address that just for a moment?
Well, it's, in a nutshell, St. Augustine, which is very durable. But on the other hand, if you're playing any sort of sport, or you're running across it, or running, having a ball go across it, it's not a sport grass, but that's what they want. And in addition, when we move the ball fields, what the master association's proposing is the city to put in the fence that they're going to lock, and redo the ball fields, and put the grass, the old, the existing grass there back in place. So we've got a few hills to hurdle over this, and the sooner, I think the sooner we have all those issues before us, the better.
My comment was to the effect that we have a park ranger, and we have a park ranger aspect that we do at some of our other parks. And we might be able to work with them. That is part of the Newport Ridge Park that was dedicated to them when it came from the county. You know, this didn't come in, at least under my understanding, the same as a subdivision that would be brought into our community, where they would have to dedicate the parkland to us. So I do see that this probably has ownership in their realm. The big thing I think that they're trying to do is not lose control of the park. They do not want the park, they'd like to be able to have use of the park on a regular basis, the same as we're experiencing in the other parks. And they do have Little League, and the people that are using the ball fields taking care of them. The park is, I understand, in pretty good shape. That is not the problem. The problem is, is that it's being run over by someone else. And so if, maybe we can, my suggestion is, is that we pursue it from that aspect, and I think it's in their benefit and ours, too, maybe on some kind of a lease back or something, where they would have the first rights that they deserve on their property to, you know, to set up through the park system, the ranger system.
City attorney, you have a comment here?
Mayor, I just wanted to say that since this is the report, this isn't the time and place to discuss it, but I appreciate the offer and recommendation of having outside council review these documents. I think that's a good idea, and we will do that. And then we can come back to the council with a report on what the offer of dedication provides, what the agreement provides, enforceability, and how the city needs to proceed.
Good. Anybody else? Good. All right. Mr. Webb? Mariners?
No report on Mariners Library. The Centennial Committee is, we're moving forward. The event that, the first decoration opportunity for the float that was scheduled for November 12th has been changed to December 17th. And so that's when we'll be looking for volunteers there. The next one is the Marina Park Committee. And again, as we've reported before, that committee is reported back to the council and is waiting for the council action. It's my intent, it's my thought that probably sometime after the first of the years, when we would bring that back to the council for further discussion.
Well, city manager, is that your understanding on schedule? That's good. That's fine. So that Mr. Billings is here, he, you know, he'd like to know. Okay. Any other committee reports? Mr. Nichols?
There was a website review committee, and unfortunately, there was only one councilman there. And there was a very interesting discussion, and I think there needs to be more on that, on just how to use the Granius contract we have as far as live video, whether that's to be used to a very heavy extent, or whether that's more of a government-type recordation of our council and possibly planning commission meetings, and relatively stays in that vein. And I think that's, that was discussed, and we, certainly no conclusion can be brought at this point.
Mr. Ridgeway?
Yeah, thank you. Last week, I went to a SCAG meeting. That is Southern California Association of Governments. It's a 75-member board. We discussed goods movements. I just want to report on this. It really is the discussion, and SCAG, by the way, is a regional planning agency that basically has no authority. But it is charged by the federal government and the state government to be the clearinghouse for monies for housing and public transportation. More importantly, on the LA Harbor Long Beach, and I didn't bring my sheet of facts, but right now, there is the majority of discretionary shipments coming in from the east and across the Pacific come. There is only one deep, there are two deep-water harbors on the west coast, LA Long Beach and Seattle. The big tanker boats cannot go through the Panama Canal. So we will endure the impacts of that, especially the city of Long Beach. But what is being discussed is a parallel freeway adjacent to the 710, and then another freeway that would take all the truck traffic off of the 60, working 24 hours a day at the harbor. And the, let me mention without any change, the demand for the TEUs, those are the transportation equivalent units, the 40 by 20 containers, is going to increase fourfold in the next 20 years. By the way, the industry as a whole, logistics and delivery, will create a million new jobs in Southern California. But basically, what's happening is all of the goods that are being sold in Chicago and Denver and Salt Lake City are coming through our harbor. The impacts are tremendous, obviously traffic and air quality. And it isn't that we can shut it down. It's controlled, by the way, boats and planes are controlled by federal government. So we must address the issue, number one. And more importantly, number two, as I said in the SCAG meeting, because there were a few people who wanted to shut it down, we're a state right now of 36 million people. By 2025, we will be a state of 50 million people. So there is nothing we can do. Growth is here. Traffic is here. Trucks are here. I just want to reiterate that. The air quality and traffic impacts will be felt throughout Southern California, including Newport Beach. There is nothing we can do about the immutable march of population increase. And so, again, this is just a broad-brush comment. The traffic that we feel in our city, we have not, since I've been in council seven years, approved any major project, and yet our traffic is probably 30 percent more. That is just regional traffic coming through. It's just a fact of Southern California life. But SCAG is trying to address the issue of this major problem getting our goods. And for whatever it's worth, there are nobody who has inventories anymore. It's cheaper to ship than to put any of these goods in inventory, and that's what's happening. So with the computer age, you can, you know, the Walmarts or the Coscos can order a million TVs back in Chicago and with fairly good reliability, have them there on a date certain within a two to four-day timeframe. And it comes by, in this case, it will come by cargo ship to probably trucking or to the outskirts, and then by train back to Chicago, and then reverse it again to a truck. It's a, it is a significant problem for all of Southern California. I just want to make sure everybody in Newport Beach understands, we are not isolated from this issue in any way, shape, or form. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ridgeway. Let me add. Are you then suggesting that since we've started the dredging project in the upper bay, that we might ourselves be a minor deep-water port?
Actually, it's interesting. Some people from Ventura and Oxnard want to create a separate port up there. It'll never happen. And Insonata is looking at it, clearly. Insonata is looking at it. And San Antonio is a minor port. Seattle is, they're actually discussing widening the Panama Canal. The dollars and cents to do that is so astronomical, it's almost cheaper to go around the horn.
With that said, Councilman Diggle?
Yes, I went with Councilmember Ridgeway up there. He's been the policy wonk of the city council, and I have an interest myself in public policy on one of these committees. And I know that SCAG has been likened to an intellectual theme park for public policy junkies. That's kind of their reputation. Anyhow, it was a very fascinating discussion on goods movement. And one statistic that caught my attention is last year in Southern California, $150 billion was pulled out of the economy in refinances. And so that's the kind of money floating around. That's people buying iPods, automobiles, and so on, that's propelling this demand for all these goods movements. But I think part of the story, too, is that although the ports are good for the economy, certainly they actually could hurt some businesses because of the amount of air pollution that they produce than others in the basin must produce less. So, for example, the furniture industry has really left Southern California. So it's a very interesting discussion, and I look forward to becoming more involved in the issues of regional government.
I just make a comment. Chris Norby was there. He made a comment. He says, "Why don't we reintroduce manufacturing here in Southern California?" Two comments, and I stood up and made a comment. One, we have regulated the industry away from here. As you know, 11 percent of Orange Counties is manufacturing, and I think we're down to 9 percent at this point in time. But one, we have regulated, and two, more importantly, for everybody to remember, besides the change in population, we are a global economy, period. When we adopted NAFTA, we are a global economy. So we are importing labor, period.
Okay. Any other committee comments? Selich, you want to weigh in again?
There.
Nope. All right. Just don't want to leave you out there. Okay.
I didn't want to leave all that knowledge up there. I never report on SCAG, guys. Never.
Maybe we'll regretfully leave this agenda item and go to the next. Okay. Planning Commission Report. City clerk?
Item number eight is a Planning Commission Agenda for November 3rd.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. As opposed to the last several Planning Commission meetings, which were relatively short, the Planning Commission last Thursday did take their meeting to 12:30 a.m., after starting at 6:30 p.m. So it was a lengthy meeting. And the commission did get through all of their, all of the items on the agenda, of which three were relatively significant. which three were relatively significant projects. The first project on the agenda was a request for a 17-unit subdivision at 919 Bayside Drive to replace an existing 64-unit apartment community known as Newport Marina Apartments. This item was originally considered by the Planning Commission on August 18th and they raised a great number of issues about the project. And most importantly, some real issues related to the manner in which the public coastal access was to be provided. The discussion, excuse me, of the commission really focused on whether the lateral access along the North Balboa Island Channel should be placed on dry land within the subdivision or should be allowed to continue in its current location along the existing boat dock gangway in front of the development. The commission was really concerned, one commissioner in particular was very concerned about this and really advocated for the access to be placed on dry land. However, the Planning Commission did not move in that direction as a majority and they approved the project with the public access on the boat dock gangway by a vote of five ayes, one no, and one commissioner had to recuse himself. The second item on the agenda was a variance request for a property, yes, sir?
Patty, when will that project come to us?
We are going to place that on the agenda of December the 13th.
Well, good, you wouldn't want to end the year without taking that on. No, that's good. Go ahead, excuse me.
Okay. The second project on the agenda was a variance request at 3809 Channel Place. This was one of the most unusual variances that the commission has considered actually ever in my experience. The subject site is about 1,000 square feet and was created illegally in 1960 through the recordation of a grant deed without the benefit of the required parcel map. The property had, had since that time changed hands and therefore, the city was required to issue a certificate of compliance for the lot. And we did issue a conditional certificate, which included specific language prepared with the assistance of the city attorney's office to clearly state that the mere issuance of the certificate did not guarantee that the city would actually approve redevelopment on the property. The requested variance was actually not very large. The proposed house was 988 square feet, of which about 350 square feet were the two-car garage and a laundry area and a stairway up into the residence. So the house is only about 600 square feet and is a one-bedroom, one-bath, very, very small residence. The commission on discussion did think that the request being relatively modest, that the variance could be approved. Although it was a highly split Planning Commission, it was approved by a vote of four ayes and three noes.
Let me, let me stop you. I mean, in that, my specific question is, this was an illegal lot, no subdivision, no, no subdivision map, and because of a conveyance, the city is forced to recognize then it validates something that's an illegal lot and therefore, then it ends up in a variance? City Attorney, you want to respond to that?
Yes, I will. We worked on this over a year ago when they made an application for what they call a certificate of compliance. It's a provision in the MAP Act and it actually, the city had no choice but to issue the certificate of compliance under the terms of the MAP Act. Way this parcel was formed is the, it was originally a subdivided lot and then at some point in time, what was the year again, Patty, I don't remember?
1960.
In 1960, they took the, a portion of that lot and deeded it off. And this particular parcel of the, or the, was remainder of an originally subdivided, of an originally subdivided lot. The MAP Act requires cities for these types of formed lots where there's been a transfer of property ownership to requires us to issue, the city to issue a certificate of compliance when it occurred prior to, I believe it was 1972. And I spent quite a bit of time trying to figure out a way to not have to do it because it just didn't make sense, but it's pretty clear that we're stuck with it. But what we did do is we made it conditional and we made it very clear in the certificate of compliance that there wasn't any requirement for the, for the city to issue a variance in this case or any other kind of discretionary approval that might be necessary to build on it.
What was the date that the transfer had to take place by?
I think it was before 1972 is the way it's set up in the MAP Act.
Okay. You have a comment on this?
A very, very unusual case. So I think the Planning Commission had similar difficulty with the concept of why the city had no discretion in issuing a certificate of compliance.
But they did have discretion in issuing the variance. And so this would be an item, if the council was interested in reviewing on their own, that would be subject to call-up.
Patty?
Yes, it is subject to call-up.
Patty? What was the, it says the variance was for the maximum allowable floor area. How much did it exceed what was allowed?
The site had, had no buildable area, so all of it. Because of the small size of the lot and the fact that there were no special setbacks shown on our districting map, the front yard setback was 20 and the rear yard setback was 10 and the lot was less than 30 feet in depth. So there was no buildable area.
I see.
But the, let me just make a comment. The FAR in the community is 2.0 and this worked out to like a .95 FAR.
It was, it was.
After, after the re, the, the variance on the setbacks.
Yes.
Are there any setbacks?
Yes.
Yeah, there's a, they have front side and rear setbacks, just much less than what the code requires.
Are they similar to what exists though with other residences there?
Probably the main difference is that a small corner of the house along Channel Place is to within one and a half feet of the, of the sidewalk.
Actually, Mr. Vazanci, I just, I just make a comment on Newport Island, it's a very unusual place. This, this is, the basic footprint of the garage is really what's been copied. So all they did was just go up above the garage. For all intents and purposes, the footprint currently exists. So I too was kind of confused, but I did read the staff report, I did look, it's.
Were there any objections by other homeowners on the island?
No.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, no, excuse me. Mr. Nichols?
Was this a reversed corner lot? This is the back half of a reversed corner lot?
It's, it's nothing like anything you've seen before.
Okay, I'm sorry, I.
The original lot was a triangular-shaped lot that was actually a fairly good size and this is just the narrowest part of the corner.
A little corner up front or something that has no, because it's zoning from everywhere.
Yeah, it doesn't look like any other thing we've ever had to deal with. The third project considered by the commission was the project of Brookfield Homes of the Quail Street condominiums at 1301 Quail Street. This site is currently being used by Fletcher Jones Motor Cars for automobile storage. This is in the Newport Place part of the airport area. The Planning Commission did receive a full presentation of the project and discussed various aspects of the requested general plan and zoning amendments. The Planning Commission, starting at their next meeting on the 17th, is going to be considering the land use policies, including the land use policies for the airport area. And the commission did not feel comfortable acting on this request until they had, were, are able to consider the comments and the deliberations of both their commission and the city council on the land use policies for the airport area. The item was continued to December the 8th, although there is a possibility it might be further continued depending on the discussions that your body and the Planning Commission have in the month of November. The last item on the agenda, which we didn't actually, yes, sir?
Mr. Nichols?
So I just want to reiterate what I think you've said. And you're saying that this is going to come back to the Planning Commission because we need a consideration of everything going on in that area? Is that, well, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, I'm trying to.
The Planning Commission did not feel comfortable in taking action on this project until they and the city council had at least conducted their deliberations on the land use policies. I can't say for sure that the commission, after that is done, will be comfortable with approving the project. They may decide, as they considered last Thursday, that the project is premature and should not be considered until the conclusion of the general plan process. But they didn't say that decision would be made one way or the other. They just wanted to have more discussion before they took it up again.
Would this come back to the EQUAC and some of the others? I mean, this is a small, I mean, this is a 86-family project, but it's on what used to be a hotel, I guess? Or a property that was zoned temporarily or actually for a hotel?
It's currently general plan and zoned for a hotel.
Okay, my, my question would, I, I too think that it would be very good to have this mulled over by, but, so the, the city understands what we're doing up in that area. I mean, this is, we're, this is a pretty extensive change from what's there now, is what I'm saying, on the ground.
Yeah, it would be the first residential project in the airport area. And I think the commission definitely saw it differently than the fourth item on their agenda, which I'll get to.
And I guess the next thing I'd like to emphasize is first of many, or at least several at least, right?
We have one other residential application that has been filed in, actually in the Cole Center Newport part of the airport area. But that particular project is actually a residential and commercial mixed use. This particular project is just typical residential townhomes with no commercial.
But in that, in that section, from MacArthur going over to campus, from that triangle there with the 73 on the south, there, we're talking about some additional residential-type, apartment-type or, or multifamily?
Yes, that's one of the land use changes being considered as part of the general plan update.
Yeah, and I, I think people, I'd just like to maybe get that vetted a little bit so that people feel a little more comfortable with what's going on there. We've spent two, we have two different, the general plan is going that way, but we also have some special planning, I think, that's being looked at in that area, do we not? Ms. Daigle had a contract?
Well, it wasn't my contract, the city council approved it. And furthermore, the, that planning is really being melded with the efforts with the general plan, so it's, it's coming out in one piece and through the G-PAC.
So, so this will come out as part of this, is what I guess, I'm hoping?
Yes, the preliminary work from Roma Design Group, as Councilmember Daigle has said, is being incorporated into our draft of the land use element and the council will be reviewing that on November 22nd and 29th.
Any other questions on that one?
Just so everybody knows where the site is, is this not the site with the old Fletcher Jones, Jim Slimmons auto dealership site that spans Bristol to, to Quail and, and fronted by Spruce? Is that right?
Yes, yes, it's on the corner of Spruce and.
That's where he parks all the, those lines of used cars now, when you drive by.
That's the current use.
Or new cars, fine. All right, good. That's where people know where it is. Let's have the next item, thanks.
The last item on the agenda, which we took up just a few minutes before midnight, was a project called the Santa Barbara Condominiums, a project of Lennar Homes at 900 Newport Center Drive. This particular residential development is being proposed to replace the existing tennis courts at the Marriott Hotel. This actually was a relatively clean project. The commission really didn't have much problem with it. It's a 79-unit project. The reason why they felt differently about this project and moving it forward as opposed to the project up on Quail is because Newport Center is already a mixed-use area when you look at it in its whole context. The Colony Apartments are there, Villa Point is there, Sea Island is there, Granville Condominiums are there. So there's already a good, healthy mix of residential in with the commercial, both office and retail. So the commission was much more comfortable with this project. And while it does, may present some issues for the applicant in terms of processing it through the Coastal Commission, who seldom likes to see visitor-serving uses changed to private residential, I, I think the, the Planning Commission was quite comfortable with it and they did approve that project six ayes with one commissioner recused.
Patty, where was that one on the affordable housing requirement?
The requirement is for units to be produced either onsite or on some other site within the city.
Thank you.
Okay, what's the next action on the Lennar project? Is that approved unless it's appealed?
No, that will automatically come to the city council. I had discussed scheduling with the city manager earlier today and I think we're going to have, include that discussion at our staff meeting tomorrow. Maybe it'll come next time or maybe it'll come on the 13th of December.
Can I ask why that automatically comes or this project comes and some other project may not come?
These are legislative actions, they're, this is a general plan amendment and a zone change. Those are things that.
Okay, because it's a general plan amendment, it comes to the council. I'm just trying to get the which is which or why.
As opposed to the variance, which the Planning Commission can take, original jurisdiction is set forth in the code.
But this took a general plan change to change from tennis courts or to this?
From, from hotel support facilities to residential.
I just have one question. The Newport Center has been kind of set up with view zones. This is a 65-foot-high building. Does this affect the view zone of the, of the properties along the back there, along San Joaquin Hills and?
No, no, this is to the north of the site plane.
So this is, so this is up in that area, you're saying?
It's not in the site plane area.
Oh, I see, okay. So it's not in the site plane of the buildings in the back?
The buildings in the back actually reviewed this project and had no problem with it.
Thank you.
All right. Patty, any other questions?
Long report tonight.
It was a long meeting by the Planning Commission. Okay, City Clerk?
Item number nine, general plan update, review draft goals and policies for the recreation element.
Are we ready to embark? Sharon?
Certainly hope you are.
Good.
At your last meeting, I think that the council made your way through all of the background discussion and made some comments and suggested some changes there. And we had begun discussing the first goal and, which is Goal R1, found on page 10. And I don't believe that you finished that. I have a comment at Policy R1.3 and nothing after that. So I think that was where you stopped, so it would be appropriate to, to continue with Goal R1, the policies under that, and then we'll just go through them one goal at a time. And a reminder, we've shown two colors here again, and the blue shows you the changes that were recommended by the General Plan Advisory Committee and the purple or magenta shows you the changes recommended by the Planning Commission.
All right, let me pose you, just having you start on R1, right above R1 is Service Area 12, talks about Newport Coast, talks about open space goals, and we're just talking about potentially a homeowner association fencing one in. How does that jive with what the general plan expects? Or is it, if it's open, it's okay even though public can't use it?
Well, that discussion of. Well, that discussion of Service Area Twelve is the background section, which is to be describing what we have today. And there were a number of comments on that at your last meeting.
Right.
And so we need to, along with taking a look at those agreements, make sure that we have this discussion correct.
It's fine, it's good. Thanks. Nichols?
Just a question on that. We have seemingly two policies that are going parallel through the city, and I'm just trying to understand them myself. One is that when a subdivision comes into the city, it's supposed to provide park land that's usable to everybody. In other words, city park land. And the other one, we're talking about private park land. So some communities, Newport Coast came in and dedicated park land, but it was private. It's behind gated communities in many areas. And this seems to, so I'm kind of misunderstanding here, because in our older areas of the community, we were required to donate public land for parks. And basically, that public land has been used for everybody's parks, and now when the new is being built, it seems to have private parks. And I'm trying to understand that.
Well, the reason that Newport Coast was done in that fashion was that the city did not issue those approvals. All of that, that planning and the approvals of that development was done at the County of Orange before that property was annexed to the city. And when we annexed it, we agreed to take it with all the rules that were already in place.
Actually, Roden, can you clarify that? Wasn't there originally public dedication of park land?
Yes.
And then when we entered into the annexation agreement with those folks, we agreed to take those dedications from the county and then lease that land to them so that they could keep it private.
That's accurate.
So initially, there was public dedication, similar to what we have in the rest of the city. However, when that agreement was negotiated, we negotiated away the public's rights to use that property.
That is accurate. There is still a public dedication. That was a requirement of the county for the projects to be developed.
Right. So it was only through the action of the annexation that we lost our right to use that park space, not because it was not provided for initially.
I believe the park space in Newport Coast is dedicated to the individual subdivisions and in the.
No, that's incorrect. It's dedicated to the county, and we took over from the county. And we, as part of our agreement with the committee at the time, pre-annexation, in the pre-annexation agreement, we agreed to lease, to take those properties from the county and then lease them to the, back to the association.
I'm not speaking just of Newport Coast or Newport Ridge group. I'm speaking of the other groups as well. Pelican Hill, the other subdivisions there, each have their own park facilities. Each of those are in gated communities, or in, within gates and are not public, they are private. And that occurs at every community up there, not just one.
Right. The individual private.
Now, I'd like to also address that that occurs in communities that were way before that. Jasmine Creek has their own private pool facilities and so forth. Harborview Homes has.
Well, many private homeowners associations have their own facilities, and you'll find that throughout Southern California.
But they were accepted in lieu, is all I'm saying, Mr. Ozansky, and that was as part of the park requirement.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Webb?
I think that there's a little bit of confusion there. Almost every new subdivision did have their little community facilities that were individual to the subdivisions, but there were public park dedication requirements in addition to those. Like, for instance, our policy in here says that require future development to dedicate land or pay in lieu fees for a minimum of five acres of park land per thousand feet people. So that the county has similar requirements, and that's why the Newport Ridge property did have its public park dedications. And what's the name of the park that's up at the top of the hill that the Irvine Company is constructing now? I believe that that is supposed to be a public park up there.
You're talking about along the freeway.
One of the things that we really need to recognize is that even though we have private communities, and they take care of their private needs in the smaller areas, when you start getting into active recreational facilities, none of those private communities have active baseball, soccer, and the larger fields that are necessary to handle those uses unless you have a park like Newport Ridge, or the new one that's being built, or some of the others, Mariners Park, Benita Canyon, Benita Creek, all those are separate. So that we need to, we don't have a whole lot of developable land left, but we still need to recognize that we need a few more active parks. And I think that we, in looking at our, this element, we have to try to provide those.
And, Mr. Mayor, I just may add one additional bit of information for you on Newport Coast and Newport Ridge. While the private recreation facilities within the individual communities, which usually may have a meeting room, usually have a swimming pool, sometimes may offer tennis courts, they are really just the direct recreational facilities for those complexes. The main difference between us and the county in regards to those internal private facilities is that the county's dedication system does allow a partial credit against public park land dedication for those facilities at a rate of about fifty percent, which the city does not do. So there is a slight, there is a reduction in the amount of public land that the, that the county got because of that program within their dedication structure.
Wasn't Jasmine Creek, though, for example, when they developed, they did not, well, they did dedicate a view park, right? And that was allowed.
That was Jasmine Park.
In lieu of park land, I mean.
Well, that was a public dedication.
I'm not arguing that, but it's not exactly a park, it's a view.
It's a pocket view park.
Yeah, and that, those were allowed at that time in place of public park land.
Well, that was a public park dedication.
Well, it didn't fit the definition of a park, though, of the two acres with streets on two sides with parking and so forth.
The, the private recreation facility within Jasmine Creek was not given any credit for its park dedication requirements.
Councilman Daigle?
Yes, can I shift gears a little bit here? When I look at the structure of the element, I compare that, for example, to the housing element, where you kind of have certain essential steps to planning, goals, policies, programs, implementation actions, responsible party, funding sources, and timeframe. And when I look at how this is constructed, that's not delineated, but I, but I would find it important to add some of those steps into the, into these policies. For example, let's take aquatics, which I have a particular interest in. Good facilities bring good programs, and I, my interest would be to buttress this element by identifying funding sources, also looking at timelines, responsible parties. So for example, you would have construct new facilities, Santa Ana Heights Community Center, use RDA funds, accomplish this by two thousand and eight. And so therefore, we really lay out the steps of how we're going to get this done. In addition, maintenance of new facilities, collab, maintenance of existing facilities, collaborate with the school district, the city, private sources, nonprofits, and identify the funding sources and the timelines to keep our pools up. So I would see that this element really needs to be, have some more pieces into, in it. That would be my thoughts about it. And if we could maybe somehow weave some of that kind of language into the policies, I would support that.
Mr. Mayor, could I respond to that?
Sure.
The housing element is the most specific of all the elements in the general plan. Well, except in our case, the land use element has a lot of specifics. But that is because the housing element is required to be updated every five years. There are special guidelines for preparing a housing element that are not just a suggestion, you must follow them, you must have your housing element certified by the State Department of Housing and Community Development. So it's more appropriate and easier when you're looking at a five-year timeframe to put in those kinds of specifics, whereas the rest of the general plan, we're looking out at least ten years, and the Council might not know yet what the funding source would be for something that is a long-term goal, but something you want to find a way to achieve in the future. Or you might not want to commit yourself to, to one kind of funding source, but rather think about it every year as you do your capital budget. We will be doing an implementation chapter for the entire general plan, but it won't have, at least it hadn't been our thinking, to have quite the level of detail that you've just described, because that's not typical for general plans, other than the housing element.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Webb?
In getting into our goal of discussing the goals, I have a question in relating to one, two, and three. In Policy 1.3, it says, "require developers of new high-density residential developments on parcels of eight acres or larger to provide onsite recreational amenities." Does that mean they would not have to provide the active park spaces elsewhere?
Well, the way this policy was drafted and then recommended by G-PAC and the Planning Commission, there would be no credit against the public park dedication for these forty-four square feet per unit. However, the comment that was made at the last council meeting was that we should amend that policy to allow credit if the onsite improvements are open to the public.
I guess I have problems with.
Actually, I have a question mark on that note, so that might not have been something that you reached consensus on, it might just have been stated by one member.
I would have a problem with that, because I think that these are the type of people that are going to want to use some of the outdoor active park facilities, and just providing gyms and, and swimming pools onsite don't really give them the opportunity to, to do the really invigorating sports outside. So I, I don't think I would like to see that changed. I'm happy to see that this is in addition to the park dedication.
Mr. Selich?
Yeah, it seems to me that the biggest deficiency we have is in active sports facilities. I mean, that seems to be what's stated in the element and what, what I hear throughout the community is a need for more active recreation. And yet, if you look on page five, handwritten page seven of the chart, it shows that we've got a deficit of thirty-eight, thirty-nine acres, whatever it is. And how many, I mean, if all of that, we've got plenty of passive open space and parks in the city, so I would assume that all, if not most of that thirty-eight acres would go to active sports fields. How many sports fields are we going to be able to get on that?
I don't know. I hope Maria might can answer that.
Here's an answer coming.
If you use Benita Canyon Sports Park as a reference, that park is approximately forty acres. And on that park, we have room for three mini soccer fields, we have three main-sized soccer fields. We also have then Fields One, Two, Three, Four, Five, ball diamonds, so quite a few.
So how many did I add up to?
And some of them are used, there's overlap. So some of the ball fields, the outfield areas of the ball fields can be also used as additional practice field for soccer fields. So I think it's, let's see, we have Field One, Two, Three, Four, Five, Eight Full Size, and then we've got the three mini fields. But that also leaves some good practice areas as well.
Okay, so we'll be generous and say eleven. How, since you're up here, how do you feel that meets the needs of Newport Beach and our population projection? And how many, how many more fills are we going to?
With the additional, I, you know, I think with our population projections, I think that that would be adequate. Right now, we continue to see an increase, but that increase is not just a matter of our population increasing, that increase is also because some of the sports organizations have increased the age groups that they serve. They've gone to younger and they've gone to older. You've got a lot of kids that don't make the school sports at the middle school and high school levels, and so they continue to want to be in the club levels now of soccer and of baseball. So it's not just the population growth, it's the growth of the sports themselves, too, that we're seeing an effect of. I think if, if in an ideal situation, we were able to use those thirty-eight acres for ball fields, I think that would meet the need very generously.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, I think, Maria, it's fair to say on Benita Creek Park that part of the handicap of coverage on that, of ball fields, is because of the peculiar configuration of those, of those parcels.
Right.
I mean, they're just not wide enough for their, you know what I'm saying? They didn't lay out well for Parks and Number Two because of the potential reversion to the school district. It had to be laid out with a parking area and whatnot that might not have been the case if you had had a clean sheet and was going to, you know, install parks in that particular parcel. So that's a, it's not necessarily an appropriate ratio that would apply.
Right. If those thirty-eight acres were all in one area, absolutely that would be ideal, but if they're split up.
Right.
I mean, for Sunset Ridge, for example, I think is fourteen acres. The best I think we could hope for.
About eight. It's probably about seven or eight acres.
Well, the lower portion of it, right, that we would put ball fields on, we would maybe get two baseball fields and a soccer field down the middle, joint use, you know, only one or the other at the same time. So that's, that's really more realistic, is that they'd be split up, spread out.
Okay. Another question I had was on Policy 1.4, it's talking about updating the park fee assessed to new residential development. What is the park fee now? And when was the last time it was updated?
We're, we're just working on an update to it right now.
The existing park dedication fee is, I believe, right around six thousand dollars. It has not been updated in quite some time. I don't know the exact year. We are currently working on getting a new appraisal and bringing back an updated fee. We have a planner assigned to it, and he's doing his background research. He has taken the step of trying to find out what similar communities' fees are, such as Huntington Beach, Laguna Beach, with coastal orientations. And if their fees are any example, that fee could go up by a minimum of a hundred percent and perhaps more than a hundred percent.
So I've heard that some of the other cities are charging up to thirty-five thousand dollars a unit in park fees based on their.
Yeah, we haven't, we haven't found that. We found a lot of twelves and fifteens, though.
That's six thousand per unit, residential?
Per built unit, yes.
Is it possible, when we look at this, to put in some kind of a mandatory escalator, CPI adjustment every year, so that we don't have to fall a hundred percent behind what the market is?
Well, we could do that, but I think in my experience with the cost of residentially zoned land, that, that wouldn't get us the kind of increases that the reappraisals would.
The problem is that we're not doing the reappraisals on a regular basis, and so in the interim, we're losing a lot of money.
Right.
I mean, we should be doing the reappraisals every five or ten years anyway, but in the interim, we should be every year ratcheting it up a little bit.
Yeah, ideally, I would say once every three years, and we did it once every three or four years for a long time. It wasn't as necessary when there was declining property values, and then, you know, the staff size was reduced, and we just didn't have the resources. We're recommitted to getting that and to keeping it more up to date, because it really is important. Because it not, it does help fund land, but it also helps fund land improvements, so.
Okay. And I've got a question on Policy 1.3. When you say, "require developers of new high-density," does that refer to a high-density category in our land use element? Or are you just using a generic term, high-density, there?
I think it's referring to the high-density category in the element.
Okay, and what is the density per acre on that?
I don't have it with me. Sorry, don't know. But the thinking was that, that this would apply in the airport area if there were to be residential development, and for new residential development in Newport Center.
Okay. Well, I would, I would say on 1.3, I agree with Councilman Webb, that I'd like to see the policy remain the way it's written.
Mr. Mayor?
Sure. On Policy 1.10, I'd like to see if we can modify number five, which is. On policy 1.10, I'd like to see if we can modify number five, which is the West Newport Service Area. And right now, it says, "If the Banning Ranch area is annexed into the city, develop an active park on the site." I'd like to see it read, "In the Banning Ranch area, develop an active community park with, of twenty to thirty acres with night lighting."
Mr. Mayor, can I, can I ask that we go back to, to policy 1.3 and perhaps do a straw vote or something, because I think we've only heard two or three council members giving an opinion on that.
Well, I, if you want to do that, I would agree with Councilmen Selich and Webb as well, that it should be in addition, as it's written currently, as opposed to giving a credit for the forty-four square feet. Any other comment on that?
I would agree that-
Well, you got four right there, so-
Thank you.
Is that enough direction?
Yes.
I won't cut anybody off.
I do have a comment on 1.9 and also the question about Balboa Island. We're older communities, and our land is being constantly taken up by trees and dedicated trees on the land and things like this, that take it out of circulation. And so, basically, even parkland that is there is not usable for parkland. And so, we go from active to passive constantly. And now, it's, the recommendation is, is that use underutilized city rights-of-way along Ocean Boulevard and Bayside Drive in Corona del Mar's passive parks. Well, that would mean that there would be no active parks developed whatsoever, and I, I think that's unacceptable. I think we need to look for the lands we have and, and look to reuse those as active sites in some ways. Whether it be at Grand Holland Park or going toward the Oasis, that needs to be reconsidered. That, nobody wanted trees on that, and we got trees all over the dumb thing, and consequently, we can't use any of those parklands there. And the same, when we're talking about above the library, that's a five-hundred-yard distance across there. That could be active park sites. That does not have to be passive or something like that. I'm, I'm sure that this is going to say that's what they'd like to have there.
Can we, can we divide this perhaps into two policy issues? The way 1.9 is, is written, it's dealing only with the underutilized city rights-of-way. And, and you'll see that it, it used to read, "Continue to," so it was just a matter of continuing our current practice. And those, those are areas that are, are really too narrow to be doing any fields or anything, so it doesn't sound to me as if that's, those areas are your concern.
Those are being converted into private land right now. Every single one of those along Ocean Boulevard, excepting the, the end one, is being converted into private land.
Well, this policy would say that we should not do that anymore.
Yeah, and I think that's a good policy, but I'm just saying that's what's the practical.
But then I think your concern on, on the others, you might want to add a policy that says something to the effect of, of keeping active parks open for playfields or something to that nature. Am I understanding your concern? I'm not expressing it well.
I think you're understanding my concern. We have accepted passive parks for a park requirement throughout that area, and as a result, there is an absolute dearth of playfields. If you, if you look throughout Corona del Mar, Lower Harbor View, with the exception of the, the elementary school, which I think we could work together to develop the fields on that, which are unusable because of their lack of care, that might be worthwhile. But we need to get some active park sites in there.
Mayor Heffron?
Yes, Councilman DeGel?
Yes. I understand the housing element, the specificity per state law, but it seems to me that in good planning, you know, going back to those components, responsible parties, timelines, and funding sources, if we can somehow weave that in. And it's kind of difficult to do this on the fly, but what I was thinking in the neighborhood of policy R-110 is something along the lines of construct new aquatics facility at Santa Ana Heights Community Center jointly with the county by 2008 with the use of private and public funds. Another policy would be, as, as necessary, maintain existing swimming pools jointly with the school district and use private and public funds to do that. So, that way, it would seem as if we kind of lay out a planning process, responsible parties, who's going to pay for it, and timelines, and it just would seem to gel a little bit more to actually get these things implemented. Those are just my thoughts.
Mr. Mayor?
Selich.
As I said at the, at the last meeting, I'm, this was developed with a lot of hard work from G-PAC, our Citizens Advisory Committee, so I'm loathe to make any changes in here, unless it's something I really feel very strongly about. And I would just like to point out to you that Nancy Gardner from G-PAC's here in the, in the audience tonight, and I think before we make any changes to this, we ought to invite her up to give us her take on G-PAC's reason for adopting the policy and what her reaction would be to any changes we might entertain this evening.
Well, it's time. Thank you for your patience.
This is almost past my bedtime. Nancy Gardner, having reviewed what the Planning Commission did and its changes, they were really very minor, which suggests to me that, that after their review, they were very much in favor of what G-PAC did. We spent, obviously, on the better part of a day looking at these and felt that what we came up with would meet the needs of our community in these very important areas, trying to look at what, what they would be in the future, as well as what we need right today. So, obviously, as far as G-PAC is concerned, the fewer changes, the better. I did appreciate the fact that, again, I think the Planning Commission made a couple of board changes that actually strengthened some of our areas, and I have no major complaints for a change.
Okay, any, any questions for Nancy? Other than you recommend that we keep it as is? Good, thank you.
Well, if that's a case, let me ask the answer question. Do you think that your committee members would have any problems as far as the, the change that I recommended, instead of saying, "If we, let's, let's be positive and say we are going to have a park up in, in the Banning Ranch area?"
Okay. Yes? Yes, you better come up. Thank you.
What would be your thought, I'm sorry, what would be your thoughts as far as adding maybe some timelines for some of these things, or funding sources, or responsible parties?
We haven't done anything like that. I mean, we are approaching, we will be doing it this weekend when we approach the housing element, which I've just been reviewing, and which is, does get to a level of specificity. Since we didn't address it as a group, I would feel uncomfortable commenting for the group.
Nancy, how would you answer the thing in Corona del Mar and, saying, Balboa Island, where there's a huge dearth of parks that you're talking, active park sites? In other words, basically, they've been able to move to other parts of town and use those so that, I mean, that's basically how it's been done.
Well, as I say, we certainly have tried to balance, for the future, the needs. I just know, I can appreciate, living right by Bayside, that it does seem that at times we don't leave room for kids just maybe to kick the ball around. I don't mean regular fields, but that's just a personal observation. And again, we didn't get down to that level of saying, "Well, this particular park will have this many trees and this many acres for kids to, to play on." We're just trying to do a, an overall view.
I have a follow-up question for you. I appreciate your answer is very diplomatic, which explains why you're the chairperson. My follow-up question, is that, is that something that maybe you could consider with the G-PAC? You know, I know, for example, that people are trying to get certain parks built, they feel like it's going on forever and ever and ever, that we were to have some timelines on some of these things.
If we have time, we can always look back and address some of these issues.
Okay, thanks.
And, Mr. Mayor, if I could just jump in on, on that one. There are other ways for council to do exactly what Councilwoman DeGel is suggesting and not put it in the general plan. I mean, council can adopt a priority of its own and tell staff, "We want such and such done, you know, by such and such date, with such and such funding." I mean, it, and, and that wouldn't make it any stronger, I think, than if, if it was in the general plan.
All right. Mr. Rosansky? I would also like to suggest, maybe in addition, to this policy 1.6, where we talk about use of the following criteria when considering acquisition for parkland. I, I think I'd like to add something in here. In light of the table further back, where we showed there are service areas that have significant deficiencies, a statement to the effect of maybe H here, which would be after the last one, G, existence of a deficiency in the service area is one of the criteria to consider for the acquisition of parkland.
You don't think that B covers that? Cities' needs for-
Not sufficiently.
Okay.
Well, it's fine, but you've got to keep us moving. You've, you've done this, you've had more drill than, than I have, unfortunately, or fortunately for us.
Are we up to recreational programs yet?
What's, what's the next input item?
Well, unless there are any more comments on the policies under Goal One, we can move to Goal R2, which starts on page twelve, and that's maintenance and preservation of existing parks and recreation facilities. Only three policies there. Goal Three, accessible parks and recreation facilities to persons with disabilities, and that, again, has three policies under it.
I would like to suggest that, that 3.2, "Provide beach wheelchairs commensurate with demand," and, and we're providing parks that are totally accessible to everybody. For example, what we did on the park at Carnation and, and Bayside, where we put a big sidewalk all the way through it and everything. I, I think maybe we're going over, going beyond what is really required. I think we can have parks that are accessible and parks that are non-accessible. We're spending huge amounts of money, and you're, you're saying every park, any park that we have has to be fully accessible-
Yes.
-in, in every place. So, do they get to have a, a wheelchair thing that goes all the way out to the end of the, the point on the, the rocks at, at Big Corona? I mean, don't we have to have wheelchair accessibility out to the end of the?
We are bound by certain regulations with respect to the ADA, especially for playgrounds. When we either redo or build new playgrounds, there are very strict regulations about accessibility. For example, the larger sidewalk areas. We have to provide the rubberized surface to one of the decking and transition points on a playground area. So, there are very specific things that we have to do via state regulations. So, we're mandated to do it, and that's why we do it with all of our playgrounds. As far as the beach access, I don't have quite as much knowledge in that area. I don't know that we have to provide, we have to provide the wheelchairs. I think that's an amenity, and it's a nice thing to do, to provide access. We've got different points throughout the beach that we provide the pathways that go a lot further. But in our parks area, we are bound by those regulations.
I would have to say on the, the walkway, we put along the one edge of, of Big Corona there, you know, that's only fifteen feet from the back of the cars, where you can just walk through there. What we did is now remove a layer of parking or back it up, so it's not as easy to use. We put in compact spaces instead of full-size then in other areas. I, I don't necessarily think that we got an improvement, nor is that any or easier to, to access anything. We're just putting a sidewalk in, and can anybody tell me why?
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Webb?
Because it's the right thing to do. And our federal government, for many, many years, well, all of us ignored it for many, many years. The federal government finally decided, "Well, it's enough. Everybody is going to have to provide accessible public facilities. That's what we're doing, that's what we're designing to." I know you disagree-
No.
...and some of those items, but that's what we have to do, and this, goals that are set up in here are helping us, helping to remind us that this is what we have to do. And I don't think it, it does us much good to sit and, and disagree with those. Again, as I started off, it's the right thing to do, to provide accessible public facilities, and I think that we should leave it at that.
My only comment on that, Don, is that this particular walkway is at the end of a parking lot, and this particular walkway does not have ramps to get the wheelchairs up onto that sidewalk-
Mr. Nichols?
Except at the very end. So, it really isn't, and it, it doesn't make anything any more accessible. It just uses up some of the parking area. Now, the whole parking lot was available to take the wheelchair in. It's nice and smooth, it makes it real easy to do. I don't think we're making it less accessible, except by putting the sidewalk in.
We shouldn't really be discussing specific projects on a general plan issue, so that why don't we try to look at our general plan issue on these things?
Mr. Mayor? Mr. Selich?
Yeah, can I make a suggestion here, maybe? I'm satisfied with the rest of the policies, as, as G-PAC's recommended them, and maybe to make this go faster, if there's anyone on the council that, that wants to discuss any specific policy, maybe rather than sitting here and going through each and every goal and policy, just pull the different council people and see who wants to discuss which policy.
If, if that's a motion for approval of the rest of this document with the amendments, I, I second that. I, I don't see any problem with all the recommendations. They're very minor-
Mayor, can I make a motion then?
Okay. And with the changes that have been suggested by either Councilmember Webb or Rosansky. And I'll second that.
Well, what does the rest of the council think about that?
I think it's a good idea. Just get public comments and go forward.
Yeah, I agree.
Well, it's fine. Good. Mr. Rosansky, the issue is, Mr. Selich says, "For the balance." It's fine with him. No other council person-
It's fine with me.
Fine with you? Nancy, fine with you? Fine with you. Okay, so with that, as a motion, what's our next step? Open a public, public comment in this segment? Come on up.
Councilmembers Laura Curran, I live in Newport Beach. First of all, I want to thank the city for the great job they did in helping put on the crew races this weekend, because I ended up getting to watch them, and they were lots of fun, and congratulate them on the opening of Back Bay View Park. I took a walk through there on Saturday, Sunday, and it's really quite nice. Encourage you to take a look at it. My comments, I'll go through and just provide them. I think G-PAC, again, does a yeoman's job in this process, and all the councils, while there are a few specific areas to comment on, though. Under recreational facilities, I think in the narrative, we call out the recreational facilities, such as soccer fields, baseball diamonds, tennis courts, the aquatic center that will be planned, and the indoor facilities, all of which are interesting and that, I mean, are valuable and that I use from time to time. But I would also like to see us call out, as recreational amenities, the open space and landscape areas that have California coastal sage scrub and other California representative plantings and communities, because for me, those are very tranquil areas and very calming areas to go to and provide a contrasting recreational amenity.
Look, Laura, they're in our resource plan, and they're really not appropriate in this plan. They're, it's a whole separate element. It's an entire separate element.
Well, I appreciate that. I'm commenting as a person who is trying to respond to the different parts of plan as they- that come up. If they're in the resource plan, I'd be interested to see that. But I also think, you know, we put this together so that when someone who's interested in a particular part looks at it, it's fairly complete when they look at it. So, I appreciate that. Secondly, under shoreline access, I agree that we have a lot of access to the bay, but I think there are parts, especially along PCH, where access is limited, and that would be an area of opportunity, having access to the bay expanded. I know there's some plans for that. On page 7, we identify issues and needs for boating facilities. There's a lot of quantification for park facilities as far as the amount of acreage required, and I hear a lot of discussion about the need for marine facilities, but I'm from Yorba Linda. I'm from the hills. The only boats there are on East Lake. And so, when I hear that, I don't have a way to understand, how do our boating facilities compare to other boating facilities in other communities? And so, it would be helpful to have a table like Table 1, which explains what we have and where the deficits are, partly on an educational basis. Finally, on Goal 9, Policy 9.2 talks about implementing a long-range plan for public trails and walkways to access all appropriate areas of the harbor. And this is a project that I think has a lot of promise, and I'd love to see it happen. And it's one, if we don't have a specific plan and timeline here, I'm all for seeing a specific plan and timeline as we move for implementation, and would also look at this as a project where we could put a bikeway in as well, or areas of bikeway, to compensate for the limited amount of bike path along PCH. And finally, as a comment, I do think the sidewalk amenity at Corona del Mar is valuable in that now, as a person who goes down to that beach quite often, I don't have to dodge behind the SUVs in order to get through to the main beach area. So, and I actually hadn't thought about, I knew the sidewalk was there, and I used it the other day, and I thought, "This is kind of cool," but there were no cars. Now that I've, I think, I understand you disagree, but now that I've been there and I've thought about it in that context, you're right. Next time on a Saturday, I don't have to dodge all the SUVs that line up there to unload to get into the grass area.
Is it pretty hard to walk through that 25-foot of space there? The 25-foot wide space between the two back ends of cars that are going into the parking lot?
The amount of space is fine. It's the amount of traffic and the people backing up their very large cars, which don't really park in that particular area. That's a challenge, especially when you are taking children to the beach. So, thank you for your work, and we look forward to seeing the continued output.
Okay, public comments, open. Still open? Still waiting. Okay, Mr. Billings, come on up.
Tom Billings, Newport Beach. Hey, this is my favorite subject, recreation and parks and open space. Going through this wonderful document, thank you Nancy and your crew that developed this, there are a couple of areas that I just would like to comment on. One is, there were several comments from practically every council member tonight about the need for more active sport fields, and, gosh, I don't know where we're going to put them because there's not a lot of space, except Banning Ranch was suggested as an opportunity. Oh, yeah, and then Sunset Ridge Park. You know, it's interesting when you talk to the residents, and we experienced this with Marina Park, is there's a need for soccer fields, there's a need for active sports fields, but residents in the neighborhood, they don't want it. They don't want the traffic in coming to that area. But there certainly is a need, and if you go to other cities, they have figured it out. So, hopefully, we can address that further. Community pool facilities. Again, I commented earlier in the public comments, but I see it's right here, the need, as Councilman Daigle pointed out, for additional swimming pool facilities for sports programs, youths, and the public. So, that's great to see in there. And then I just want to address Policy R 1.10, which is under the park, page 11, and then item number 6, which refers to Marina Park, as developed the Marina Park site for marine and/or, they scratched expansion of, but and/or recreational facilities. And I'd say, I'm encouraged that this is in here and to emphasize that marine recreational facilities there is exactly what we, from Protect Our Parks and other residents and groups at the city are working on, and we know, I know that the city will look at the different proposals for Marina Park in January, but I'm not going to go into it because you're going to see it again. I know it will be in front of you again, but this is our plan, Window to the Bay, and it does incorporate marine recreational activities. And I think the key point is that it upholds what the residents, the 20,000 that voted "No" on L, voted for, which is non-commercial activities at Marina Park. And, you know, and just real quick, in one zone, we have what's called Marine Recreation Zone, excuse me, right here, with different marine recreation activities oriented towards hand-launched craft, dinghy docks for dinghies and daffies to come ashore, docks for city sailing programs to accommodate an expansion of what they have now. I won't go into the details, but three zones, so marine recreation, then we have what's called the window, which is an opening up with a nice open space for the public to picnic and walk and enjoy a park atmosphere with wonderful views of the bay. And then the third zone is what we call the children's zone, which includes a tot park, Girl Scout house, and some basketball courts. So, then again, I just want to emphasize that we're encouraged to keep, you know, working with the city on this plan. And my last comment is, just in terms of public access, you have a policy R 9.5 on page 16, protect public access to coastal resources from private slash gated communities. And I know what, I've always been puzzled by the Balboa Bay Club. I understand, maybe I'm wrong, but that all beaches in California are, should be accessible to the public. I guess even in front of someone's home, the public can go on that beach. At the Bay Club, you go in there, and there's a fence in front of the beach, and there's a sign that says, "Members only." And even the hotel guests can't use it, just the members of, I guess, the Bay Club. So, I've always wondered if that is okay, if that's legal. Anyway, thank you for your time, and we look forward to moving forward with the city on helping the parks for the city. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Jan Van Der Soodt, Newport Heights, and also a member of GPAC. And I would like to basically second what Nancy Gardner said and ask that you basically leave the document alone as approved by General Plan Advisory Committee or GPAC. I'd like to address what Councilman Webb had to say about lighted park at Banning Ranch. And if you look on page 9, you'll see at the very top of the page, the possibly lighted element for a ball field at the Sunset Ridge Park was stricken out by GPAC. So, I think that GPAC might have a problem with lighted ball fields at the Banning Ranch property because the basic vision for that, I mean, includes a passive, nature-oriented park, and the lighting of that is not really compatible with that kind of a concept. I think that a daytime park could be fit in, but I would argue against putting that lighted feature in there. I'd like to address the public access on Policy R 9.1, and I'd like to ask that the parking and the access through the Bay Club, I know that that is city-owned property, the Bay Club is city-owned property. How we could allow, how the city fathers could allow the public of Newport Beach not to have the beach access through the Bay Club is a real, I mean, it's a real problem. I think that we have not, the city council has not been strong enough in keeping public access through the Bay Club and access to the beach. I think the way they've arranged it now, you can get to some sort of a walkway, but you can't actually get to the beach, and we should be able to do that, especially since we own the property. So, I'm wondering if there is some point that you could add to these policies that would encourage increasing public access through the city-owned properties such as the Balboa Bay Club. I'm wondering if that is a policy that you could add to this. The other point that I would like to bring up is Goal Number 2, where you talk about the, using the INLU fees, use funding from the policy R 2.1, use funding from the city's park dedication fee ordinance to enhance existing parks and recreation facilities. I'm wondering if you can add the word "acquire" in that policy. So, we have to, we not only need to enhance the existing parks and recreation facilities, but we need to acquire more parkland. And I think that the park dedication fee ought to be used for that purpose, because we are deficient in about 40 acres of parks in the city. As a general comment, I'd like to say that I like passive parks. I think they're good. I like the amenities of adding trees to the passive parks. I would not like to have the city be in a position of turning passive parks into active parks. I think that, you know, that's a big, that's a huge policy change. If that were instituted, I would advise you, or I'd ask you, not to entertain such a thought as that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comment? I'm going to close public comment. Sharon, what's our, what is the action item before us? What do you need?
We were looking for direction on these policies, and I think that there's a motion in the second on the floor, and I just had one question on that, whether that included the changes made by the Planning Commission.
Yes.
Can we straw vote the lit field at Banning Ranch? Which policy was that?
The lit, the lit -- Ball field at Banning Ranch.
Can I make a comment on that? I think that the, there's a significant difference between Sunset Ridge and the area that an active park would probably be built in the Banning Ranch area. And the difference really is that in Sunset Ridge, you have houses that are looking directly over the park. The park is going to be below those houses, and it doesn't make sense to have lights in that area. You're looking out over the park directly at the ocean. The probable location for an active sports park facility in the Banning Ranch area is going to be right on the city boundary line, up against industrial properties, and it's probably the only place where you can actually have an active use as well as a lighted area and with relatively insignificant impacts to the surrounding areas. As far as that being an active, I mean, a passive park area, that's one of the things that we, one of the changes we made was that that would be a passive park, but it also indicates that there's a relative, there's a time limit on that to where a secondary use with that would be recreation as well, I mean, recreation, but residential and other types of uses. So, I think that this still is an area where we really should consider a lighted park. This is probably the only area in the city where a lighted park could be constructed. So, I would ask that that remain in that place.
Right. My thoughts are that lighting is something you can take up on a project-specific basis, and certainly omitting it from the general plan doesn't preclude it from ever happening, but certainly putting it in the general plan is, you know, it's not something I'm comfortable with.
It helps make it happen a lot easier than if it's the other way.
Sharon, who took this language out? Planning Commission?
That was GPAC.
GPAC took it out. You took it out.
My recollection, and I can't, I do believe that it is largely related to Sunset Ridge and access to it, but that's my recollection.
So, how'd it come out? I mean, did you focus on Banning Ranch or not?
It's related to Sunset Ridge.
Good. That's fine. Okay. So, you're looking for a straw vote?
That's true.
Okay. And the straw vote is that we would insert back in the lighted ball field option. Is that right or not?
Not, not under the Sunset Ridge area, but this is --
In Banning Ranch.
In Banning Ranch, I'm right. The suggestion, the suggestion that I had made on Policy 1.10, number 5, the wording I said was, "In Banning Ranch area, develop an active community park of 20 to 30 acres with night lighting."
Is that type of specificity appropriate in the general plan?
I think it's appropriate if the council wants to make that strong a commitment to it.
No, no, but it's just, okay. So, that's the action item. Do you want a straw vote? Okay. Start at your end, Selich.
I'm okay with that.
Yes? Okay. Rosansky?
I guess I'm okay with it. I would like to make sure that when incorporating Councilman Webb's language, that we take out the word "annexed" here.
Yes, that was part of his change.
I understand. I just want to make clear that that should be the direction, whether the property is annexed to the city or they ultimately process their approvals through the county, that our general plan says that we will have an active, substantial active park there. I guess the only consideration as far as the lighting goes, I understand what Councilman Daigle's saying and what Councilman Webb's saying, maybe a middle ground would be just with putting in language like substantial consideration for lighting at the park.
Or consideration for night lighting. I'm with that.
Yeah. I'd feel more comfortable with that.
So, it would say with consideration for night lighting, something to that effect.
What does that mean?
I'd go along with that. I think it sufficiently softens it so that it's not mandatory.
Right. I think it just kind of puts people on notice that that's what we would like to have there. It's not, I mean, let's say we wanted to approve a park that didn't have lighting, and is that a violation of our general plan at that point, for whatever reason?
Before you approve a capital project, you first have to determine that it's consistent with the general plan.
Right.
So, you do need to be careful.
So, I don't know that I'd want to hem ourselves in so closely that.
All right. So, we got, Selich, you want to retract your vote?
I'm fine with the modification.
Okay. Okay. We have a one, two. Mr. Webb? Anybody else?
I'm fine with modification.
Good. You already got four then.
Let me make just a comment. When you put it in that type of language, it becomes a true policy. It's a balancing, and that's what policy documents are supposed to be. When you get specific, like we have done on some of this, it's no longer a policy. It's mandatory. But I'm fine with the change.
I won't deny you the chance to weigh in.
Yeah, I think that's a great middle ground there.
Five? Mr. Nichols?
I'm okay.
All right, you're okay. Fine. You have direction?
Yes, thank you.
Direction. Okay, what's next?
You didn't vote on the motion.
Okay.
The main motion.
Let's vote on the motion.
Mr. Rosansky.
No, with the modifications that we've talked about for the last hour and a half.
Motion carries.
Good. All right. City manager, we've been rolling here at a blistering pace for three hours. The question is, we have one item. What's the, what's your estimate on that will take?
Actually, we have two items.
Two items, then how?
Actually, we have three items. We can say for that. We took here.
That's done. So?
What are we saying, about 30 minutes for the wayfinding? I think so.
We have 30 minutes. We can take a break or continue. Counsel, what do you want to do?
Continue.
I got two continues, three.
Sure.
Four. Okay, we got continued. All right, next item. City clerk?
Item number 10, citywide wayfinding and directional signage program.
These actually what we're looking at here?
Yes, and the consultants will explain that in just a minute.
If those are extra after this is over, I want one to wallpaper my wall in my garage. And I'm going to make a motion to approve this.
Your garage?
Yeah.
Pardon me?
That's where I have my council map.
Okay.
It's very cool.
It's his little memorabilia wall.
Little?
You're going to put it in the, in the Ridgeway Council manic museum?
This is a project that's been underway for quite some time.
Let me say, it was almost my third meeting seven years ago, so that's how long --
Oh, it's not that bad.
You know, so, no, I'm serious.
Oh, on the peninsula, we started. But the -- Oh, on the peninsula, we started, but the citywide, and the citywide wayfinding and signage program came as a recommendation from the Economic Development Committee, and the city council approved a contract with Hunt Design to do this. And we've worked with a committee in the community representing the different business districts and residents. And the idea of the program was to clean up the public signage in the city. We have a collection of signs in different colors and sizes and shapes. A study found that it's difficult for visitors to find their way around Newport Beach. It's not clear to people that all of these wonderful villages and districts that we have are actually part of the same city, Newport Beach. So we wanted a sign program that would get that message across while still identifying each unique district. And we've been working on a number of the design issues. We've had a couple of pilot projects, and so now we are ready for council action on the design. We aren't asking for action this evening because we had originally planned this as a study session item.
Are, are these signs up?
There are.
Some of them are up. So you're going, aren't you asking for more than that?
Not, not this evening. We, we will be at a future meeting. The, we had planned this as a study session item to introduce the council to it because there's so many council members who were not sitting when the project started, so we wanted to take you back through the history, and then we'll bring it back on a future agenda for action.
So what are the signs that are up? Are those just kind of a look see, see how they, how we feel about them?
That's the pilot, that's the pilot program.
Good, good.
And so I'll have our consultants take it away. Wayne Hunt and John Temple.
Mr. Mayor, counsel, thank you.
And Mr. Ridgway.
Just a quickie. Unless council really wants to sit through this, I, I just ask that it be brought back as is for an action. Quite candidly, it's a gorgeous program. Sharon, I might have been through this so many times, maybe I'm, I'm being short-sighted here, but it's well-accepted on the peninsula right now, as George knows. We've had no complaints. It's not that we've had, oh, we have?
We have.
We can give a very brief summary.
Wonderful.
If you want to make it very brief, we could skip the power point.
Don't you have to catch a plane or something?
They drove down here, they sat through the meeting.
Shall we go to the brief version?
Yeah, I would recommend that.
Can we raise the screen then? We'll just, we'll just.
Wait, 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 wait.
Mr. Webb?
Before you raise this, put the screen back on again. I want everybody to look at the arrows in those various different signs. And the one sign where you really can see the arrow and you see which direction you're going is the brown sign at the bottom. The green sign, okay. But at any rate, let's look and keep those in mind when you look at, when the screen goes up and you look at those other signs. I have difficulty, and I had difficulty as I was walking today reading the, the arrows or seeing the arrows from a distance. They don't stand out well enough.
The recommended.
The recommended proposal.
Let's raise the screen. This has been a four-year project so far. It's our second-longest city signage program. We've done twenty of these around the country, and this, this is the second-longest. And if we prolong it, we can set the record.
All right, we're not finished.
Well, our eyesight's getting worse, too. That's, that's the disadvantage.
That's true, so is mine.
Are you suggesting we've lost our way?
My name is, my name is Wayne Hunt, and I am principal at Hunt Design Associates, and my partner here is John Temple, who's the principal designer. And what you've seen up is a pilot program that's been studied by staff and by us for, for two or three years. And we put some sample signs up this, this year, which are represented by the lower sign here, counsel, which had letter size and sign size that we negotiated with the previous council and staff. The samples have proved to be a bit underscaled in terms of legibility and letter size, so we've studied again, and the, the sign at the top is the new proposed sign, which is substantially larger. In addition, we have a brand-new typeface that's just been approved by the federal government that is extremely legible, has been tested, and will now be available for highway signs. So we think this will be a, a much more readable version of existing pilot signs. I was very pleased to see how good these looked driving in tonight, as oval shapes and have strong identity have. But we're, we're ready to go into the final budgeting and final design development and bring it back for action very soon, so it's kind of an update. We entertain questions. Oh, of course, we have the, the city gateway signs as well, a, a mock-up of which identifies city hall out front. There'll be a pattern of ten of these, I believe. Is that right, John?
Six.
Six of these, sorry, to identify gateways into the city. So we see this kind of a coordinated signage identification program and a pattern of district identity signs also.
Meaning where? When I'm, when you're coming into Corona Del Mar, we're going to see a sign like this at, at Cameo Shores?
No.
No?
That's not the city boundary.
Well, I understand, but, but there's something there now. Where, where are these going to go?
We have them in the, in the presentation. We can get it quick.
I'm just glad we have the right population on our signs. That took about five years.
If you refer to slide fifteen in your handout, it gives the general locations of the city gateway sign.
The other one's in the red circle, right?
The red circle is correct.
Here you go, way in the back.
Okay. Don, I, I just want to say that I, I have, and the people on the peninsula have had the benefit of these signs now for, how long have they been up?
Since April.
Since April. Candidly, I, I will say that the white on this colored blue show up, the arrows show up very well. I do agree with you on the green. I, I just don't get it.
My, I guess what I did on my walk today, I was, I just kind of positioned back and forth, and, and I was just curious about why you picked the square signs, I mean, the square arrows, as opposed to the more standard, more pointy ones. Because to me, as I was, I mean, I went and pasted, but went back a hundred feet and then a hundred and fifty feet, and by the time I got back to where I couldn't read the letters, it looked like a little square box. It didn't look like an arrow. I couldn't see which, I couldn't determine in my own mind which direction it was going. And so that's why I, I made the comment about, I think that the other type of arrows are much more legible from a distance than the square ones.
It's a good comment, and we, we actually have this discussion on most of our projects. And in Los Angeles, we went to the arrows that you're speaking of. It's an aesthetic decision. We think the arrows should read, should read, but also balance with the typography. We could go ahead and look at the other arrows again. We think with the, now it's covered up. We, we think with the new enlarged typography and the arrows are larger as well, it will have an equal, equally effective reading of the arrows and the messages.
Are these where the, the signs are now? We had some in Corona Del Mar that were in front of buildings, and the size of your round thing is so big that they looked out of place. They just looked totally out of place. And the letters on them are not big enough relative to the sign, so I, I really don't think, I'd rather have my Corona Del Mar sign right where it is, and, and it's individual nature, and I know for a fact Newport Coast wants to do the same thing. And I, I basically am not in favor of this at all.
If I could address the, this will be supplemented with district gateway locations, which identify districts such as Corona Del Mar, and it's represented by slides sixteen here. So the, the idea is that you're giving people the, the entrance to the city in monument form, but each district has its own identity.
The people of Newport Coast have just paid a huge amount of money for a Newport Coast sign up in their area. I mean, they want Newport Coast there. We want Corona Del Mar there. We do not want to have a blue and white sign that points our way and say, that's Corona Del Mar. We want the sign we got.
Well, there's a directional sign to get you there, and a unique district monument sign that says Corona Del Mar when you get there. So it's directional signs and then monument signs.
If your directional signs are on MacArthur or someplace where there's nothing else there, you know, like the city sign, the, the signs that are directional on a highway, I don't think anybody would mind them. But if you're putting them on, on that coast highway in front of businesses and so forth, this is not desirable, in my opinion, anywhere. And, and they were fought before. I'm sure that I haven't seen any along coast highway in Corona Del Mar, but when I did before, it was around Fernleaf, right opposite Sherman Gardens, and it just looked totally out of place. And so I don't know, maybe you can get it to sell, but put one in Corona Del Mar. I'll bet you you get plenty of comments. And if you put one in Newport Coast opposite Newport Coast Drive, I'll bet you'd get plenty of comments, too. So I, I, I don't know. Try it once and see, but we ought to put them there and, and see where they, you know, whether they're acceptable. George, I think scaled down, that's probably a great idea. You know, I, I actually support that idea. I mean, the, the whole intent of this is getting a uniform wayfinding sign for the entire city. Now, in, on the peninsula, for whatever reason, the sizes are perfect, you know. If, you know, why don't you try maybe a downsized one in Corona Del Mar? Let's go ahead and hear the wrath of Corona Del Mar, or the support of Corona Del Mar for that matter. But again, the intent here is to get a uniformed sign.
And one thing I'd like to point out is that when we did the mockups back in 2004, we did two sets of them, and they were not substantially larger than the signs that are now up in, on the peninsula, but they are lar, they were larger than the ones on the peninsula. And not only that, the lettering sizes was smaller than what's now up on the peninsula. So we've been scaling the sign sizes down, and we've been scaling the letter sizes up. And we think we've got a good, well, we had a pretty good balance with the exception of the li, the, the lettering sizes, which is why we've kept the same sizes of signs. There's two, one's somewhat, somewhat smaller than the other. And we've raised the size and changed the typeface of the letters. So I think we've got a pretty good balance, but it wouldn't hurt necessarily as we move along if we wanted to do a few more tests in Corona Del Mar and in other areas as we move forward. We could do that, and again, it certainly, it certainly wouldn't hurt.
Well, I, I would just suggest the peninsula in Corona Del Mar and maybe one in Mariners' Mile, I mean, that's it. You know, after that, they're all kind of at entryways and what have you. So, you know, it, it wouldn't cost us that much to probably do a, and I would leave it to you guys to scale it or go out there and visit the area. But I, I think it's a great idea. And then after you've done that for a month or two, bring this whole thing back. I, I just want to say, Mr. Hunt, I think it's great. I, I, you know, I, I know there's a lot of, you know, this is a, a unique city to work in, and, and everybody's a critic, but I, I have to say, after seven years, and Sharon has certainly endured this, and Patty, I think this is a, a very good uniform sign program for our city of Newport Beach, and I think it's very fitting.
Thank you.
The question now is, maybe you need to, not on the peninsula, I'd leave it, but if you want to size some of these for Mariners and, I, I think Mariners could do what we're doing. I, I guess Corona Del Mar, maybe size them down a little bit, George. And you heard Councilmember Mayor Protem's comment regarding the, the arrows. I happen to think these are terrific. I think they show well, but, you know, I don't walk back three hundred feet from a sign because I couldn't see it, so.
You could certainly have two sizes.
I blur out it, I blur out it about a hundred and seventy-five myself.
I just have a quick question. On the peninsula signs, are we going to be changing those to the new signs?
Yeah, those are simply mockups.
Right. So those peninsula, because I can't read them very well when I'm driving down the peninsula. I didn't particularly care for the, the size of the font or whatever you want to call it. Yeah, they, we would leave the, or we would actually take the signs down, have the vinyl taken off of them. Basically, it's vinyl sheet on aluminum. Right. And so they'll be all retrofitted or whatever to the current standard. And the sign that's now obscured, it's not going to be an actual oval. It will have that outline. Is that correct?
This is a pretty faithful, proportionate rendition of the actual.
Oh, okay. No, I see it here. I mean, it's not going to have those white, it'll have that little banner above, just like that.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
That's to remind the people in Newport Coast that they actually are in Newport Beach.
And that's part of the goal of the program, is to.
And Corona Del Mar, Mr. Nichols, you are part of Newport Beach, whether you want to be or not. Okay.
Thank you.
I, I do feel.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes. I want to know that I've never used Newport Beach on my, when I sign where I'm from, though. And nobody's ever questioned it.
I do feel that the, the revised font, being a little bit larger, is, is better. I guess you can't, you have a difficult time getting the stroke or whatever you call it, the width of the white, a little bit more bold, but I think that, my only comment with that is, I think it looks great. I just would question the arrows. To me, in my vision, they weren't as effective as the other types of arrows.
We'll take a look at that.
I agree. I think the arrows need to be a little bulkier and maybe a little more not square, like.
We'll, we'll address that. I think it's a good comment.
What I was saying.
I like the arrows.
Oh, right, yeah, that's my man. Okay, two to two.
Can we straw vote that?
We could try Mr. Webb's arrows on the Corona Del Mar pilot.
Yeah, yeah, try one on Corona, and Mariners, because that's, yeah.
Do you have enough direction after this casserole of comments? All right. It's great. Thanks.
I believe we do. Thank you, yes.
Can you find your way?
Yes.
Again, I, I want to thank you because I, I, for a long, for many years now, and I know you've been on this one for four years, and, and we're a unique city, and we have very demanding standards, and you know what? You've done a very masterful job.
Thank you very much. It's a pleasure to work here in the end.
But we're still not done.
But we're getting there.
All right, you have direction, George. You've got direction, Sharon. You've got direction, so, okay. Are we done, this item? Public comment? Public comment? Don't lose your chance. No public comment? Okay. No vote? No vote. Okay. City clerk?
Item number eleven is the unscheduled vacancy on the civil service board.
Who gives a report here?
I can give a report. This is an item where you will be declaring the vacancy on the civil service board due to the death of Mr. Badham. His term is scheduled to expire on June thirtieth of 2006. The way your council policy is written, if there is an unscheduled vacancy with, when there's less than a year left on the term, you can go ahead and extend that term so that the new person would fill the balance of the remaining term plus the new four-year term, so it would make the term extension June thirtieth of 2010. At this point in time, you need to appoint three members to serve on the ad hoc committee, and then also approve the process to be used. We can either go through the full process where you direct me to advertise and accept applications, and then we'll come back at a future, future meetings for the nominations and appointments, or you can forego the advertising and application process and then direct me to forward the five applications currently on file to the committee for them to review and conduct the necessary interviews.
All right, Mr. Rosansky? Propose.
I would say go for the full four years, but since it is going to be a full four years, I would say we should re-advertise.
I, I would second that.
I'll call that a motion?
And, and do we advertise and set up the committee?
You need to appoint three members to the committee.
Right now?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
All right. Who's up for election? Okay, Mr. Selich, Mr. Webb, and Councilman Daigle.